Here.
She is here, Mayhan?
Here.
Jones?
President.
President, appreciate the work of the board for bringing this item to the council. We have decisions ahead with regard to eliminating the minimum and other policies that will enable us to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in the community moving forward with the presentation. Senator, would you like to think away?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'm Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager, and we are pleased to be with you this morning to share our work on reforming the city's parking and transportation demand management zoning code. Today's study session aims to provide context, research, and community viewpoints. These ideas have connected with many conversations among our residents, our development community, and staff, including the cost of development and housing affordability, climate change, and managing anticipated jobs and housing growth in the city. This has been a two-year-long process and a team effort within the community Economic Development CSA and led by our Department of Transportation and the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. I especially want to acknowledge the leadership of John Risto, Jessica Zink, Ramzes Madu, Emily Breslin, Chris Burton, Michael Brillo, Jared Hart, and Ed Schreiner. You will hear from many of the staff in today's presentation. And additionally, I want to thank our partners involved in this effort, including the Greenbelt Alliance, SPUR, Bloomberg, and the American Cities Climate Change, the Urban Land Institute, and Bedilution. We have quite a bit of information to share with you this morning, and we certainly look forward to the council discussion. So, next slide, we're going to share the agenda for this morning. We'll start off with an introduction and providing some context. Then we'll provide an update on the policy work. We'll share about the programmatic details as well as the community engagement process and the feedback that we've received so far. And then after the staff presents the presentation, staff will answer any clarifying questions of the mayor and council. Then we are very excited to hear from our distinguished stakeholder panel, after which we'll have public comment and, of course, additional council discussion. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Ramzes.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Ramzes Madu, Division Manager of Planning, Policy, and Sustainability for the Department of Transportation. Good morning, council and mayor. Really excited to be presenting this today. So I get to introduce the topic here, kind of get us on track. We're really talking about two sides of the same coin here, starting with right sizing parking. We'll be talking about why we should be doing this and what the actual action we're looking at is. We're going to be talking about reducing or taking away, sorry, minimum parking requirements. We are not talking about maximum parking or any other kinds of restrictions on parking. What we're doing is opening up the possibility for the city to have engaging conversations with developers in the community about the right size of parking. The other part of the discussion today will be focused on increasing opportunities for sustainable transportation choices. This is going to be done through transportation demand management requirements. At least, that's the proposal, and these requirements would add elements to developments that would induce things like more biking, more walking, more transit travel. All right, so what's motivating this work? In the world, we have seen that development costs are very high, especially in our area. We all know we're struggling with this and what we have heard from the development community. If you remember in our cost of development study session about a year and a half, two years ago, folks saying, yes, let's get rid of this parking minimum, it's adding costs. We also know that this is specifically the case for housing development. And also, we know that parking is one of the major elements that drive people to drive, that motivate people to drive. And as we can, if we can right-size parking, we can start really talking about reducing the motivation to drive. Now, within the city code, this has, this is not a new idea. All the way back in our, in our general plan, 10 years ago now, we adopted in there policies that speak to both of these elements, to addressing parking minimums as well as adding more TDM or transportation demand management to the development review policy stack. The Climate Smart San Jose policies also look at the same kinds of policies, and we even kind of tripled down on the effort now when we adopted the racist zero pledge. All right, so this piece of work fits into a larger body of work that's been going on for quite some time, starting off with our changes to CEQA rules around transportation. We moved from a level of service to a vehicle miles traveled metric, which was a paradigm shift in how we look at transportation within development. This is now another piece of that discussion, right? Trying to move that paradigm continuously forward. And next, we will see the access to mobility plan as well as another update to that VMT policy with lessons learned coming up next year. Now, what we're trying to do here is paint a picture of how this fits into the larger scheme of what's going on. This effort is one small piece of a much larger set of actions that the city should be looking at to try to figure out if we can actually meet the general plan goals, right? And this includes here the kind of three-legged stool of land use and design, right? Making sure that we're getting the urban villages built, that we're getting density throughout the city, that we're getting the kinds of landforms that enable a greener, more equitable style of life. The next part is infrastructure investment, right? We've got BART coming, we've got East Ridge Light Rail. We need to do a lot more, right? We need a lot more transportation investment to enable, again, folks to be able to travel in this way. And we need to create here development and transportation demand management policies to enable this as well. Now, we're going to touch on a couple of things that we're not going to dive in today. They are not the topic for today, but want to make sure they're on your radar and so you know we're also considering them. These are about public parking policies versus what we're talking about today, which is about private parking. Right, so we are looking at in a parallel effort, an update to the residential park permit program, modernizing that, looking at how we can better align it with the general plan. Sorry, the general plans policies. And we're also looking at downtown shared parking agreements. We want to use this public good to the best effect to help us get through this period, right? We're going through this, some people are calling it the juvenile period or the adolescent period of going from a car-focused city to one that enables other styles of life and transportation. And we're trying to figure out, how do we, how do we go from here to there? This is one of the elements that we're trying to figure out and see if it can fit in that. Right, with that, I'm going to pass it off to Jared.
All right, thank you, Ramzes. Good morning, mayor and council. Jared Hart, Division Manager for Citywide Planning and PBCE. All right, so with the, with the context in mind that Ramzes laid out, two ordinance changes are under consideration as part of this work. The first is to eliminate minimum parking requirements citywide from the zoning code, except for areas with existing contractual agreements like in Beardon. The second change is to require that new development invest in transportation demand management measures in their project. I also want to note that TDM measures have been in the city's zoning code for a decade and that this policy work builds on that by requiring TDM measures for new development over a certain size threshold. So the proposed ordinance changes are focused on advancing several key goals. The first of which really is, as Ramzes said, is to right-size parking by effectively removing an arbitrary requirement in the zoning code and allow developers to decide on their appropriate amount of parking based on their project's location, tenants, and access to transit. To be clear, this would not establish parking maximums, but move to a market-based approach to ensure parking isn't overbuilt. At, at the same time, a key aspect of this policy work is to require new development to invest in transportation demand management for their projects, and then to ensure TDM strategies are successful by establishing a monitoring and reporting program to track performance over time so that the city is achieving its climate goals. And lastly, it's important to create a streamlined project review process that establishes a transparent set of requirements that can be incorporated into the city's current development process. So San Jose, we're not alone in this policy shift, including some of our neighboring cities being out in front of us. For instance, over the last five years, Oakland, Seattle, and San Diego have all eliminated parking minimums near transit. Buffalo eliminated parking minimums citywide, and San Francisco and St. Paul both eliminated parking minimums citywide and established TDM requirements. So I'm now going to pass it over to Ed Schreiner to expand more on the consideration of eliminating parking minimums.
Thank you, Jared. Good morning, mayor and city council members. I'm Ed Schreiner, Supervising Planner for the Climate Smart Team in Citywide Planning. And I'm just going to kind of do a quick run-through of the rationale for the proposed ordinance change, looking at eliminating minimum parking requirements citywide. And again, to emphasize that the elimination of minimum parking requirements doesn't mean the elimination of parking altogether, it just means the removal of an artificial minimum that's been established by the city in the 1960s and has not significantly changed since that timeframe, even as obviously conditions in San Jose have changed very significantly since the 60s. So one of the costs of minimum parking requirements is basically efficiency of land use. As you can see from the bar chart here on the right, there's, our current code has different parking requirements for a variety of different uses. In most cases, the existing minimum parking requirements essentially require more area to be dedicated for the parking itself than the actual main use of the, of the land. Restaurants have one of the highest parking requirements in the city. So as you can see here, just 40 square feet of dining area actually requires 330 square feet of parking area. Study done in the past decade by Transform has actually, looking at multifamily apartment complexes throughout the entire city of San Jose, has actually shown that during peak hours, which would be the overnight timeframe, up to 25% of the onsite parking is actually unused, so that's a lot of underutilized land that could potentially be used either for more housing or for other uses. Obviously, parking itself has substantial costs just to construct. The average parking space ranges from roughly $34,000 to well over $75,000 when you're talking about like a underground structure parking space. This cost from the construction is then passed on to end users, and the parking space accounts for approximately 17% of monthly rent, and that's, you know, regardless of whether the occupant is actually using that parking space or not. Studies done fairly recently by UCLA have shown that minimum parking requirements actually reduce the number of housing units constructed. Roughly 13% fewer housing units are constructed when there are minimum parking requirements in existence. Study done by UC Berkeley that specifically looked at affordable housing showed that parking in affordable housing costs approximately $36,000 per new unit. And if you do the math for 100 units, that's roughly about $3.6 million that's needed in additional subsidies for a generation of affordable housing. There's a number of other costs to minimum parking requirements. Substantial environmental costs related to air quality, water quality, and heat island effects from massive expansive asphalt parking lots. There's obviously also the inefficiency of land use as well as just general quality of life issues as far as urban aesthetics and neighborhood walkability. So, recent study done by a Santa Clara University professor took a case study look at Seattle, which as we had mentioned, has, has eliminated parking minimums in the past few years. And research that was shown from this study showed that with the elimination of minimum parking requirements, the, the price savings was passed on to tenants and buyers, so it did, it did actually lower prices for the end users. The case study also showed that developers, even without minimums, they generally continue to construct parking for the onsite, especially outside the downtown areas. However, developers provided less parking than they would have otherwise if they had been bound to the previous parking minimums. So again, we emphasized this point a couple of times, but the goal of this is to really right-size parking. Eliminating minimum parking requirements allow developers to really assess what their specific project needs are based on their prospective tenants and based on the project's location and their, and their financing requirements. And that way, they can ensure that an adequate amount of parking is built rather than an excess supply, which often results when, when you have the mandatory minimum parking requirements. Lastly, while this update does focus more on future development, there are benefits to existing uses as well, in particular, small businesses. The elimination of minimum parking requirements will apply to existing uses. One major benefit of this is for small businesses, especially restaurants, can often, will be able to move into older commercial buildings that may not meet our current parking requirements. You know, I've been with the city for almost two decades now, and I've certainly run into this a number of times where I, you know, a prospective business operator has been looking to move into a site, and I've had to tell them, unfortunately, because the site doesn't have enough parking, you wouldn't be able to operate your, your specific use on this site. And that's not, you know, that's not a situation we want to be in. We want to give every opportunity we can to these business operators to, to run their businesses and not be concerned about whether there's enough parking or not onsite. There's also the ability to convert parking into outdoor dining and landscape areas on a more permanent basis. Obviously, in the past year and a half during the pandemic, we've seen this a lot, and I think, you know, it's something that could potentially be continued on into the future. At this point, I'm going to pass off to my colleague Emily Breslin.
Good morning, mayor and city councilors. My name is Emily Breslin with the City Department of Transportation. I'll be walking through the second component of the city's ordinance update, which proposes changes to our transportation demand management requirements for new developments citywide. And in the last few slides, I'll also be talking about our team's engagement process, including key stakeholder questions and feedback. So for those who may not be familiar, transportation demand management, or TDM, as it is often referred, are program-based or physical investments that make it easy to walk, bike, take transit, or use shared mobility services like CarShare, and as a result, take cars off the road. A few examples of what TDM looks like, some more local. On the left-hand side is an affordable housing developer in San Jose that actually purchased two electric buses to increase the connectivity of that project to other destinations. On the right-hand side is Adobe's contribution to San Jose's Better Bike Way Network in downtown San Jose. TDM also encompasses program-based services and amenities, including bicycle parking in the basements of buildings, CarShare services like Zipcar, which we have here in San Jose, as well as public bike share systems such as Lyft, which you all are familiar with, each of which has been studied and proven again to take cars off the road. Two examples, we've gotten a lot of positive reception from the community are parking unbundling and parking cash out. So unbundling means separating the cost of renting a parking space from the cost of the residential unit itself. This strategy could be especially impactful for the nearly 10% of households in San Jose that actually do not own a car, or for those perhaps households that are considering opting out of owning a second or third car. On the right-hand side is the strategy of crediting or cashing out individuals who don't use their parking space at work. The idea here being to incentivize commuters to take public transit, to walk, bike, or take other alternatives to driving alone. So telecommuting is another TDM strategy and one which could have particular relevance given the work-from-home trend precipitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. So requiring new development to incorporate sustainable travel options into their designs is critically important when we consider the significant amount of growth that's expected to occur in San Jose over the next several decades. And in this respect, the aim of the TDM requirements is to make it, again, easy for residents, employees, and visitors traveling to and from new development to do sustainably and to minimize the number of new car trips then in San Jose. It's also worth noting that behavior change research shows that people in the midst of change, including new residents or employees in San Jose, are those most likely to adopt new behaviors, such as taking public transit or perhaps testing out a new bike route. So, the city's ordinance, as Jared mentioned, already includes transportation demand management. And so, I'll speak to how the proposed ordinance changes are different from the city's existing framework. The first has to do with the types of development subjects requirement. Currently, TDM requirements are proposed only in instances where development requests a reduction in parking from the existing minimum. Under the new framework, all new non-residential and residential development would be required to fulfill some level of TDM. The field of TDM is rapidly evolving. We've seen things like ride-hailing, Uber, Lyft, bike-share systems that didn't exist 10 years ago. And these changes are captured in a significantly expanded list of TDM strategies. Finally, one of the things we have heard consistently from our community during engagement is the desire to make the entitlement process transparent, to see what is being committed to in terms of TDM in new development projects, and that this is followed up by robust monitoring and enforcement, both of which are reflected in the proposed TDM update. So, delving further into the components of the program, any new development would be subject to a baseline TDM point requirement or target. An additional TDM would be required if project the project applicant proposes above a parking, the parking above threshold established by the city. At that point, a development would then select the appropriate set of TDM strategies from a menu of options and on an ongoing basis be required to submit annual monitoring and compliance documentation. So, to reiterate, all projects are subject to a baseline TDM point target. An additional TDM would be required if the parking proposed at the development exceeds a threshold set by the city. And to note, the established threshold varies slightly according to if the project is located in downtown, within a half mile of high-quality transit or areas beyond that, with the recognition that parking actually may be appropriate in the cities where it may not be as appropriate, you know, for downtown locations or high-quality transit areas. So, under the proposed ordinance, once the project applicant has identified their points target, they'll then turn to a menu of options to select the appropriate TDM measures for their site. In some cases, subsidized transit passes may be targeted, for example, for residential developments close to transit, while another area may determine that a CarShare program is a better fit based on community input. Whatever is ultimately selected, the idea is to give both flexibility and choice to developers to incorporate a combination of parking and TDM elements best suited to their particular development project. In terms of the proposed monitoring and compliance framework, there are two levels. The first applying to small and medium-sized developments, which would be required to submit compliance documents verifying that they have carried out the TDM measures outlined in their approved TDM plan. For larger developments, the require would be the same, but also include TDM monitoring requirements, showing the rate of vehicles coming in and out of the development over the last year. And the main idea here is that the city is interested in monitoring the effects of TDM. In other words, is the TDM installed or administered working to reduce vehicle trips over time? One of the goals of the ordinance change, again, as mentioned previously, is to streamline the development review process by outlining clear steps to fulfill the requirement, with the first being to determine whether a project is required to fulfill TDM in the first place, for city staff to then review and approve the proposed TDM plan during the entitlement phase, as well as to inspect any physical TDM measures and to provide clearly defined compliance and monitoring requirements. So, just to recap, the idea of both the TDM and the elimination of minimum requirements is that they are complementary and actually can support one another. Together, these two strategies can unlock key transportation affordability and quality of life opportunities for San Jose. So, this slide provides an overview of the two-year process to engage our stakeholders, including the development community, residents, businesses, and community stakeholders, including VTA, who you'll hear from later today. Some of these engagement events were educational in nature, with many of the forums highlighting the costs of our antiquated parking requirements as well as the opportunity of TDM to create greater mobility choice in neighborhoods. They also focused on underserved communities, where we partnered with Vegilution to host a number of focus groups that called attention to the impacts of unaffordable housing, including on-street parking impacts, as well as collaborating with Santa Clara University's professor CJ Gabby to host even more focus groups in urbanizing areas, including Roosevelt Park and Spartan Keys. Another important focus for our team was engaging with the development community in San Jose through PBCE-hosted developer roundtables, a SPUR-hosted developer business breakfast, as well as a technical assistance panel with the Urban Land Institute. So, we wanted to, in closing, take the opportunity to highlight some of the key pieces of feedback and questions we have received during the engagement process. Across our stakeholders, there was general support, especially from the stance that these changes could significantly address some of the factors contributing to housing in affordability, balance resources between parking and other community benefits, and that the success of these changes rests on continued investment in bike, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure, as well as creating more walkable communities in the in the future. Frequent questions that were raised by our stakeholders were how these changes affect affordable housing, small businesses, and existing neighborhoods, how equity has been considered as part of the engagement process, and the cost implications for these types of changes, including TDM for the development community. So, in the next slide, we'll address these questions. So, one of the key benefits, as was mentioned previously, is that it takes away one of the most significant factors that increases the cost of housing, both in terms of constructing it as well as renting and owning it ultimately. The proposal would benefit small businesses and that it would provide greater flexibility when developing on smaller lots and also in terms of adaptive reuse projects. In terms of the possible effects on existing neighborhoods, there are two important angles to highlight. First, this facilitates more affordable housing opportunities for individuals and families that are currently having to share housing and alleviate the associated on-street parking impacts. Second, as San Jose continues to urbanize, it's important to recognize that on-street parking will naturally become more difficult to find, and it is things like TDM investments, which can help our city to take cars off the road by providing more sustainable options. Equity has been considered through the engagement with underserved communities, many of which are also experiencing significant growth today as it stands. We partnered with Vegilution to conduct, as I mentioned, a series of focus groups and workshops to understand related community issues and to work together input and recommendations from residents in these neighborhoods. And then, lastly, with our technical partners, Nelson Nygaard, we did a cost analysis that found that TDM measures on a per-unit basis over a 40-year period are between three and 10 times less expensive than building parking. And at this point, I will hand it off to Michael Breo back in the planning department.
Good afternoon or good morning, Council and Mayor Michael Breo, Deputy Director of Citywide Planning. So, I'm going to just close this out and kind of do a recap of why we're DOT and planning or have undertaken this work. So, this proposed policy and TDM framework is intended to first lower the cost of development, allowing or lower, which would result in lower rents for tenants and the purchase price of home buyers. Also, by lowering the cost is intended to facilitate both market rate and housing production. Secondly, the proposed framework also supports small businesses by allowing them to occupy a wider breadth of commercial properties and select a level of parking that meets their and their customers' needs. Thirdly, the proposed framework furthers our climate smart and general plan goals by providing sustainable transportation modes helps to reduce San Jose's carbon footprint. Finally, the proposed framework will allow the city to accommodate significant population and housing growth while minimizing increased traffic congestion and impacts to our existing transportation infrastructure. So, that concludes staff's presentation. What we're going to do is provide the council an opportunity to ask clarifying questions on the materials that we presented thus far. The council will have a much more extensive opportunity to discuss these materials with staff and the panelists following this brief 20-minute Q and A period. So, I'll turn it back to you, mayor.
Great. Thanks, Michael, and thanks to you and everyone who has spoken and been engaged in this on the C staff side. What I failed to do was really to thank our partners, the National Resources Defense Council and Bloomberg and the partnership that we have with them, and really want to thank Amanda Eak and Elizabeth Stamp and Elena Almedo for their assistance, we know, and their prodding. This is something that I know we've had in mind for many, many years. I think if we took this to the council a decade ago, we'd probably get the council to say yes, but it takes a lot of work to do to get to that point, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. Okay, let's go to the council now for questions. Councilman Jimenez.
Thank you. Appreciate all the information. Appreciate the briefing beforehand, too. That helped sort of help me better understand exactly what we're doing here and certainly all worthy goals. I know we don't have tons of time for questions, so I'm just going to ask a few and some I'll ask offline. But I think during the course of the briefing, and I'm not sure if I missed it because I came a little late, but I think I was I was told at some point that sometimes lenders that are financing some of these projects require parking minimums in certain, you know, they view parking in a particular way. How do we overcome that? Is that going to continue to be an obstacle, even if we're leaving it to the market to determine?
Yeah, so it is. It is true. And I think the Seattle report showed that that, and I know there's a fear of residents about this, but by eliminating parking requirements is not going to mean that parking goes away, at least not in the short or medium term. So, people that finance projects, CalPERS, pension funds, REITs, other sources in Wall Street, they they're risk averse and they do want, they're not, you know, they follow the market. So, they want to make sure that whatever product they're financing is going to meet market demand. So, they tend to be more conservative. So, you know, that's that's sort of the reality for those who are trying to get projects down to zero. However, what we are seeing is we are seeing projects, more and more projects, looking at providing less parking and asking for parking reductions through our existing TDM program. So, the level of parking is starting to drop. And I think as more and as it continues to drop, we'll start to see more comfort in the marketplace and with the finance capital markets to actually finance less parking. So, it's not going to happen overnight. It's sort of a slow progression as one project provides a little less and succeeds. And we are already seeing parking being reduced to some extent in proposed projects.
Thank you. The other question I had is related to, I think a comment was made as it relates to what's being done in Seattle. I think the comment was something, or, you know, I'm trying to encapsulate it. It was that the cost essentially went down. It was that the cost savings were passed down to the renters or the tenants or whatever it may be. And so, you know, one thing I've learned from some developers that I've talked to in the past is when we implement fees and we say, go pay park fees, go pay construction conveyance fees, whatever, you know, a developer told me once, I never pay any of those fees. Those just go down to the folks that are leasing the land to or the folks that are renting the apartment. So, what I'm curious about is how do we know that some of the savings aren't necessarily just going to profit and are trickling down to the people that are going to benefit from some of these things? And I'm curious as to how in Seattle, how that was measured, right? Because they're taking these benefits and or passing down the cost here, but then maybe holding on to some of these benefits here. And we want to incentivize development, but I'm curious about how that interacts.
Everybody's looking at me again. So, all right. So, yeah, I mean, there is no guarantee that, you know, that the builder will pass those savings on to to the tenants. I'll let Ed, I think, or one of the companions talk about the Seattle study specifically. But, you know, I think when developers are competing for tenants, you know, if they can lower their price a bit and be more sort of, if they have lower costs and have the ability to still make a good profit and lower the rents that they charge, they'll have a competitive advantage over other projects. So, there is a little bit of incentive there to lower rents. I don't know if one of you, Ed or Emily, can talk to the Seattle study and how they measured that?
Yeah, I mean, and that was sort of the, I think, the assumption that was going into that study was like, okay, there's these cost savings, but are they actually being passed down the line? So, that was kind of what was specifically being looked at and and based on. I mean, admittedly, in Seattle, it hasn't been going on that long, but for the, you know, dozen-plus projects that they had seen develop, they were seeing lower rents or lower housing prices. So, that was being shown that it actually was passed on.
Okay. And I asked that question knowing that there's obviously benefit to getting some of this built, right? That is inherently a benefit to the community, you know, especially if it's affordable housing. So, okay, thank you for that. The other question I had is, who determines whether a TD, a particular TDM strategy that's on the menu is a legit TDM strategy? Like, is there some sort of organization? Is it within the department? I mean, how do we determine that?
Yeah, I can take that. So, the TDM strategies that are included within that menu of options that we were showing and that on that slide was just a sample of them. There are 41 strategies there. Those actually come out of CAPCOA at the state level, and it's a state academic institution. I'm forgetting what the acronym stands for, but it does come from that. And actually, the similarity there between the TDM strategies for this program and our VMT program, our Tier Four TDM strategies, is that those also come from CAPCOA. So, this is, you know, a totally credible, he's showing me what California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. And so, they do, they do, they do studies across the state to look at the efficacy of TDM measures and other kind of programmatic and physical investments in terms of their ability to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So, this is, you know, an institution kind of across the state that's looking at this body of work.
Looking at sort of what's, what's, what's possible. So, with that, though, I suspected there was some organization or someone that determines that. But say we have a developer that wants to do something innovative, we're in the Silicon Valley, right? Do they need to go through approval through that organization to actually get something on the menu or?
Yeah. So, we have the first strategy that we have is a user-defined TDM strategy, and that's just in recognition, one, that the developer may have an idea that isn't captured by that TDM menu of options. And again, just to reiterate that TDM is a fast-evolving field, and, you know, there may be instances where our TDM menu of option is not keeping up with the field. So, it just creates that flexibility to open it up to developers should they decide they have something that's not there.
Okay. And then another question, I think it's something that came up during the course of the briefing, but the thought is that if it's, if we're going to be monitoring, I assume there's going to be some fees associated with that. And so, what I'm curious about is the balance of those fees, right? Saying, pay this so we can monitor you as it relates to the cost of some of these TDM strategies and how we balance that.
All right. So, obviously, to be able to do, you know, ongoing compliance, it does require city staffing. So, that city staffing needs to be funded somehow. So, the idea is that there'd be an annual fee for projects, just essentially based on the hourly staffing time it would take to to just review the documents required. So, not a, you know, not a, not a really high fee, but it'd be, you know, roughly somewhere under probably $1,000, $1,500, something like that on an annual basis.
I'll also just jump off of what Ed was saying is, you know, one of the things that we shared in that last slide was the cost savings that's actually associated with transportation demand management measures versus constructing parking. And again, what we were finding is that TDM measures are three-to-time more cost-efficient or less expensive than building a, you know, single parking space. So, you know, there's saving that is being created by the elimination of minimum parking requirements as well.
So, they'd be able to bear some of that, the, you know, fee that doesn't seem to be all that. Okay, all right. And then, and then is there staffing currently within the department to handle the monitoring? Or is that you all need to come back to us or offer some recommendations or?
Yeah. So, there isn't staff. I was shaking my heads, but I don't know if people could see that on in the virtual world. So, yeah, so we don't have staff currently, and we need to hire, we have to figure this, do an estimate of how many staff, probably one staffer. We need to, we still need to do this work to figure out how many staff. And we're going to need to pre-fund somebody for at least a year to get them up and running, right? So, so that's a body of work that we're still digging into and we need to do before we come back to council every next year.
All right. Thank you. And the very last question I have is, you know, I can think of, I represent a part of the city where there's a lot of strip malls and such, a lot of unused parking. And so, what I'm curious about is if, just to help me better understand this, say there's a strip mall that was built in 1980s, 1970s, whatever it may be, there's a bunch of leftover parking. They want to do something with the parking spaces. They want to do something with the parking spaces. How would this interact with what they do? Are they grandfathered in with the new rules or do they have to maintain those parking even though it was built many, many years ago? I'm trying to think through that.
I guess essentially what the process would be is, again, if you, the current VMT model has four kind of neighborhoods serving retail, which I think is kind of what you're talking about, is basically the threshold for that is actually 100,000 square feet. So I'm assuming most likely what we'd be talking about new construction in a parking lot would probably be less than that, so would therefore be exempt from being required to do any TDM. But they'd essentially just have to go through a standard development permitting process, like a site development permit, for example, but they would be able to proceed with doing that and not have to worry about, you know, constructing additional parking or meeting the old parking requirement.
Yeah, so, but in regards to the question of an existing strip mall, you know, so most of those are going to be under the 100,000-square-foot threshold, right? So an existing strip mall, and Ed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, basically, you can take advantage now of the no parking requirements and they could, they could, you know, they can fill it up with restaurants if they want where they couldn't do before because there's none of parking. They could put outdoor seating areas, alfresco in part of the parking, or not. They may need all the parking. That's really up for the owner and the tenants to figure that out. Now, I think if it's a PD zoning permit, that's something we're still digging into, right? Because, you know, a PD zoning technically has parking requirements embedded in the PD zoning. In some cases, it would just refer to the city's code, which is probably, I think, many cases, I don't know how many, but many cases. So that's good for them because they, our code will say, "No parking required," but there could be cases where there was specific parking requirements established in the PD zoning specific to that property and that would, we're still trying to unwind that, but at this point, it may, it looks like they may have to rezone their property to take advantage of this, but we're still working through that. Correct, Ed? Did I get that right? Okay.
All right, thank you. And if I said that was my last question, I apologize. This is the last question. And that is, I know, we hear that a lot, but it really is my last question. And that is, obviously, there's a lot of projects in the pipeline, so I'm curious how this, how this work sort of interacts with the folks that are in the pipeline and whether they're going to be grandfathered in or allowed to do some work around this.
Yes, I guess as part of the ordinance we're putting together, we have crafted a pipeline provision which would essentially allow a project that's been deemed complete to proceed through the entitlement process, you know, under our existing zoning code if desired, or obviously, they would also be able to opt into the new, the new updated code. But I guess, I mean, most, most development projects are, you know, thought of years in advance, so they probably wouldn't necessarily have the flexibility to, depending on where they are in the process, to kind of modify the project to, you know, conform to the new requirements. So, you know, we wanted to leave it open to give a, give a pipeline provision to allow people to proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the work. I appreciate it. And I appreciate, during the course of the briefing, I shared, and I'll share publicly, that some of this stuff gets a little confusing for folks like myself that maybe aren't as in tune with a lot of the transportation-related policy areas, but I very appreciate, very much appreciate you all making it easier to understand. So, thank you.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Jimenez, any more questions?
It's a tough audience.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. And as Jessica can testify, in my community, you know, participating in community meetings about projects, there's a lot of skepticism about TDM and parking requirements. And we get a lot of pushback, and there's a big concern that it's just going to push all that parking to the neighborhood streets. But my question to you is, do we have any specific examples, preferably here in San Jose, but in other cities where you've had these projects move forward, they've been in existence for a year or two, and we have some actual data on the impact of the surrounding neighborhoods? Or is this just, are we still in the theoretical stage that if we don't build it, the cars won't come?
Right. No, I think that's a great question. Jessica Zank, Deputy Director for DOT, and I definitely have enjoyed spending a great deal of time with Vice Mayor Jones in West San Jose, working on these issues. We do have a number of cases, and Ed referenced this, I don't know if we want to go back to the slide, about in these new multifamily developments, specifically when they've been conforming with our parking requirements, they actually end up with parking that is unused statistically and proven, right? Up to 25% of parking is unused during that peak nighttime period. So we know and we understand the concerns that neighborhoods have, that people, you know, if it's underparked on-site, that people will spill out. The evidence in San Jose is, you know, does point to the contrary, which is that, you know, we're not seeing people even fill up that parking that is provided in the multifamily units, and they're not spilling out necessarily into the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's at the parking, you know, code rates, but sometimes taking advantage of our current reductions to be at those rates and still not using all of the parking that's provided on-site. Now, that doesn't account for all types of development, right? We've seen in some of our older neighborhoods that, where the multifamily was built and didn't have a lot of parking, perhaps in the '70s, that there are sometimes parking issues where people don't have enough or they're in overcrowded situations, as Emily was saying, right? So we're sensitive to that, and that's part of the crafting of this policy, to make sure that it's both allowing individual developments to make the right sizing choices and then bringing in these TDM strategies that benefit the people who live in those areas as well as the people who surround them with the improvements in the sustainable travel options.
Great. So thank you for that response, Jessica. So that next community meeting, we can bring in some very specific examples to demonstrate to the community that the impacts are going to be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the Zoom for a couple of our colleagues. I believe I saw the hand of Councilmember Foley.
Was ahead of me.
Oh, forgive me. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Foley, and thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say I agree with all of the, and support all of the goals that we're trying to achieve that were listed on Slide 40. I do have a lot of questions, and I'm happy to take some of them offline as I'm cognizant that we said 20 minutes for this question and answer. But along the lines of what the Vice Mayor had asked about some results of what we're already seeing, I, on this slide, yes, I understand 25% of the parking spaces are unused during peak hours, but how does that, how does that differ geographically across the city?
So the study we're looking at here did look across the city, and you can see these are sites across, across the city actually looked at that got this number. I can't speak to exactly which sites where, but it is, it is something we, we can look at more deeply and get you information offline on.
Thank you. I suspect that closer, closer into toward downtown and that where there is more frequent transit and more options, that, that those are the more, the areas more likely to be underparked. I also know that, that the deeper the level of affordability in housing, the less parking that is utilized. So especially in the 30% and below AMI, we, I have a couple of those in my district, and there's, there are unused parking spaces there, but that's not the case when you get into around 60% AMI and people are traveling distances to get to their, to get to their work. So I'm a little bit, I feel like there are some details missing here that I need to know before, before we can make an informed decision. And I heard, sort of, I have a couple of other questions, but the, the other one on, on kind of the results is on the next slide, 13, or I guess it's a few slides back, Slide 13, there was, the, the cities were listed out and a timeline was listed out, and it looks like Oakland eliminated parking minimums near transit, and they were one of the first ones, and then Sunnyvale in 2016. And I'd really like to know what the, what the outcomes were in those areas. Seattle eliminating it in 2018 and, you know, the 2020 year being basically a lost year. I don't think we have a lot of data from that and any of the ones going forward, but Oakland, Sunnyvale, Buffalo, I'd be very interested to see what happened in those places so that we can actually get, and how those policies differ from the policy that you're proposing. So if there's any information about those, I'd be interested in getting that, and that's not a question, that's a request for going forward. And if I can get a briefing about those offline, that would be great. And then I did have a concern about how much time the TDM plans will add to the project review process. We already have very long project review processes, and I understand the stakeholders are going to be up next and they will maybe talk to, speak to that, but I'm concerned about that project review process, and I really would like a concrete answer to this question and not any hand-waving about, oh, it won't be that much more.
It's anticipated that the TDM review process would be a concurrent review process with the existing development permitting, so it's not anticipated that it will really add any significant time to the permitting process. It just, I guess, with the requirement that there is a, that we do have staff to be dedicated to doing that review, as long as we have dedicated staff, it shouldn't, it shouldn't add at all to the review process.
I just want to add to that, just be mindful that we already have a TDM provisions in our code that people are using now. So, you know, in that sense, it's just changing how we do it, not necessarily a new thing that we're doing, just to be mindful of that. The other thing to be mindful is a lot of the, at least--
Hold on, hold on. I need to address that because that's not exactly true. It doesn't apply to every single development, and my understanding of what is being proposed is that it would apply to every single development regardless of size. So it is a change.
Well, that, no, it is, it is a change.
And if we need staff time, that will, that means it will add to the cost. So will it add to the cost and the time, or will it only add to the cost, and then how much will it add to the cost?
So we don't have an answer in terms of the, Ed, do you want to answer the cost? And we really have an answer on that. We're still working through that. Do you want to answer that one, Ed?
Yeah, sure. That's currently one of the processes that we're looking at, is trying to get an idea of working with some of our partner cities that have, have done, done this kind of roughly, I mean, how much, how much staff time does this generally take to do a TDM review? And based on that, would be, you know, an hourly fee for that staff time would be included as part of the development fee supplemental.
If I could offer clarification, as well as that, that not every project will, will be subject to a TDM plan. So it's based on the current thresholds in the city's VMT policy. So those kind of smaller projects that meet the, you know, kind of small infill development definition in our VMT policy would not be subject to these TDM requirements.
Okay. That wasn't what, that wasn't what I understood when it said applicability is all new non-residential and residential development. So now you're saying that's not the case?
Yes, to be very clear, I believe it says all new residential development according to Policy 5-1, and moving forward, we should be much more clear that that means that small projects, fewer than 15 homes of detached product types and fewer than 25 of multifamily, as well as some for local serving retail, as we were discussing earlier, those are exempt, as they are exempt from the local transportation analysis policy in 5-1.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so then that leads into my, I promise this will be my last question, the Level 1 and 2, what are the sizes for each of that Level 1 and 2 developments? And I can't remember what, Slide 34, I think.
Yeah, we're trying to pull up the presentation here. Perfect. Okay, I'm going to go to an appendix slide that outlines that. Just give me a sec. All right. Here we go. Okay. So as Jess was mentioning, we have those projects that are exempt, so those would be below Level 1, so those projects not having to fulfill TDM. Level 1 would again be those projects that are required to submit, will be required to submit a TDM plan as well as compliance documentation. And Level 2 is kind of our larger developments on, you know, along the spectrum, having to submit a TDM plan, compliance documentation, as well as a TDM monitoring plan annually. So you can get a sense of kind of those thresholds from the slide here, Level 1 and 2. This is a, we should note, this is a preliminary list. We're still kind of refining this, and there's going to be added categories to it. Obviously, this isn't as expansive as, as it should be, but as an appendix slide, we thought we would include what we have so far.
Okay. And so anything under this, so if there are fewer than 99 hotel rooms, there would be no parking requirements and there would be no TDM requirement?
Correct, yes.
Okay. What slide is this in my, in the slide deck that was posted? What slide number is this?
This is, this is not. This is an appendix slide in the version we were using this morning, but we're happy to share this with you.
That would be great. Thank you. I'll hold the rest of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and the discussion about TDMs and modifying our parking requirements. But I want to really piggyback on the questions from Vice Mayor Jones and Councilmember Davis regarding the affordable housing units and the peak and off-peak parking. If you look at Slide 16, can you pull that up for me again? It, it looks to me that the, the spaces that were analyzed or the units that were analyzed, multifamily apartments, were in areas that have decent transportation options. I don't see anything in District 9 that shows that they were, that anything in District 9 was included in the analysis. I bring this up because where you have a lot of affordable housing projects being proposed, and the number one concern, not the number one, but one of the concerns of the neighbors is a lack of parking in the units and the, how that will result in overflow parking in the neighborhoods. So the 25% is a good number, but I'm not sure it really digs into what it will be the reality in areas with poor transit options. So do you have any data that you can provide us with regarding affordable housing that are not in transit-rich areas? And the use of those parking spaces?
Thanks. Great question. We don't have it on hand. We will, as we said, disaggregate the data we looked at for this study and get back to you on that and with that specific focus of making sure we're looking at different types of neighborhoods and all that. And I will remind, we're not proposing for projects not to have parking, right? We're proposing for us to be able to right-size parking. And so for, a lot of the questions are kind of under the concern of, there's not going to be enough parking, there won't be any parking for a project. And I think that it's just worth reminding us that, that we're talking about-- We're good? There we go. Okay. That we're talking about being able to create a conversation where lower parking minimums, where it makes sense, is possible. We're not trying to propose no parking in any particular place.
Minimums, arbitrary parking minimums, which actually I brought forward in 2019-- Minimums, arbitrary parking minimums, which actually I brought forward in 2019 as a priority item, and wasn't one that rose to the top, but it was something I've been considering for a long time, that parking is a barrier to development, and that parking may not be that necessary. Maybe we're asking for too many units in certain areas. The reason it's a concern, I think, to, I can't speak for the, my colleagues who've raised it already, but it is the, this is a concern of the residents in a neighborhood where bigger projects are being proposed that have perhaps not adequate parking, or the, the, it's the consideration that there's not adequate parking. So if we can point to some data that says, well, in actuality, the use of our parking spaces is, there's 25% vacancies in peak hours, I think that's a compelling argument if we have that data for some of the neighborhoods, and not just the, the transit-rich areas. So I'll, I'll move off on from that. But, so I look for the disaggregated data when you have that. Regarding, I want to talk a little bit about the annual fee and the annual compliance. Looks like we're proposing that we'll be charging the developer or property owner, actually, at that point, probably, the, an annual fee. Is that just, I, I've heard that it's a processing fee, but is it a processing fee? Is it based on units per space, per parking space? How will that be determined? And I'm, and will that be coming back to us? And then as, as part of that is the review of the annual compliance, what does that look like? What does the, what are we asking them to provide us with as far as compliance is concerned?
Yeah, so I can take the latter part of your question. So in terms of, let me just pull that slide up here. Yeah. So in terms of smaller projects, what we're looking at is annual compliance documentation. And I have a red asterisk here, you can see on the slide. This is actually applied only to programmatic TDM measures. So what we mean by that is if a development decides they'd like to provide subsidized transit passes, what we're looking for in the compliance documentation is verification that those transit passes have been administered. So it's a, you know, an invoice or something to that effect, really just to demonstrate that that has been fulfilled over the course of the year. In terms of annual TDM monitoring for larger projects, they would be required to fulfill the compliance documentation element for any programmatic elements they have in their TDM plan, but also to be monitoring the rate of vehicle trips in and out of their development. And they can do that either through, you know, a standard vehicle trip count, you know, so that's measuring the number of vehicles coming through a parking lot, as well as intercept surveys. So actually disseminating surveys to the occupants in their, in their development. The reason it is only applied to programmatic TDM is if there's an instance where a development has decided to install, let's say, a mid-block crossing, or perhaps a bike-share system, you know, those are, those are intact. And once they've been inspected by the city, you know, there's no need to do that on an ongoing basis. The last thing I'll mention is, in terms of the actual monitoring and compliance, if they have demonstrated they've fulfilled these requirements for three years, that kind of requirement is, you know, pretty significantly reduced with the understanding, you know, they've, they've conformed, they've demonstrated performance. So, you know, let's not have an, you know, a requirement that's already been validated for us.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
So regarding the, the cost, so that information will be coming back to you when we bring this body of work for your consideration of approval. But, I mean, again, we're, we can only be cost recovery. So what we have to do is estimate how much time it would take a staff person to review the materials. And based on that time, we have an hourly rate. So that's how we would calculate what the actual cost would be. It's not, it can't be a money-making generator. It's just, it's how much do we cost to do the work?
Well, it may not be moneymaker on us, but the reason I raise the question is that it's a cost to the developer, or the future property owner who's managing the property and has to provide the compliance documentation. So when we're talking about the cost of development and reducing the parking minimums to less than we require right now, that is a cost savings, but is the cost savings going to be realized if we add additional staff time? It, it will to some degree. So I look forward to more of that, and, and probably a deeper conversation later on offline. I, I know we're running out of time, so I just have a couple more questions. And one is regard to the term high-quality transit area. Can someone define what that means to me?
So high-quality transit area is a state-defined term, and it moves around a little bit, but basically it means a high-frequency transit, whether it be bus or rail. And so within a rail area, I believe it's about a half a mile around rail stations. And then the bus, I think it's every 15-minute frequency within a quarter mile.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, or for the moment, it's my final question. If we providing this opportunity to reduce parking requirements, if a developer chooses to make parking that is then, has an opportunity to be converted to other uses, do we, or would we be considering offering some sort of incentive to a developer to do that so that they can convert their parking spaces to maybe commercial uses, commercial occupancy, that sort of thing? Or how are we considering that we might offer incentive, incentives to build the parking now, but build optional opportunities to change their space, their parking spaces to other uses?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I just want to call out that we, when we worked with the Urban Land Institute, kind of at the beginning kickoff of this project, one of the primary recommendations that came from that was born out of those conversations, was actually the ability to adapt parking spaces, as you're pointing out. You know, there's a big opportunity there. We don't want to be restraining kind of adaptation reuse as time goes on, as the parking is no longer needed. So one of the things we're looking at and have been talking about pretty frequently is the idea that we could be crediting developers for adaptive reuse as part of the TDM program. However, the caveat there is, these TDM measures are those, again, that have been verified by CAPCO as, as reducing VMT, obviously adaptive reuse may not. It's not something that's been, then, that's been verified in that way. But it is something that we are cognizant of and are looking to incorporate into the process and recognition. There may be instances where parking is no longer needed in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. And sorry, I did say that was my last question, but I'm, just one follow-up question regarding
Councilmember Jimenez are part of an evil conspiracy.
We are, and my question piggybacks on Councilmember Jimenez's question. Regarding, sorry about that. Regarding the lender requirement, you mentioned, and, because I can't see who's speaking, I think it was Michael who mentioned it, that it doesn't, you're seeing a movement in lenders requiring parking, but are you seeing that in institutional, institutional lenders? And I'd like some data to show that you're getting that information, not just anecdotally, but you're really seeing lenders who are saying, we will fund these projects, even with the reduction in parking?
Yeah, so lenders wanting parking is not, not a new thing, right? That's been how its development's been done for years. I don't know that we can provide or have documentation, the lender saying it's necessarily okay, but it's more that we're seeing, what we can do is at least show you projects that are coming in, and to what degree they're requesting or getting entitled for less parking than is required, i.e. they're asking for a parking reduction. And then we could provide information on, okay, well, are those, you know, to what degree those projects are being built?
I, I'm, thank you, and I'm, would be interested in that. And I'm particularly interested in institutional financing. So with that, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you, Mayor. This, that really was my last question.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Praz?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. And I have a unique experience and wanted to be able to ask staff their thoughts. So a couple years ago, in District Three, we approved the very first project that had zero parking. It was a high-rise project, and, and so not, not a, not one that was just a few units. A high-rise project that we approved with zero parking near the Deardon station area. So it was an area where we know we wanted to prioritize other modes of transportation. And it certainly was a bit of a push and work with the community there, as you've heard from some of our colleagues. But we got it through. Unfortunately, that project has never broken ground. And, and now it's coming back where they want to increase some of the density on that side based on our one-engine-inoperable allowances of some extra density in the area, Deardon area there, and, and maintain zero parking. And what I'm honestly concerned about is that we, we may have developers that look to maximize the opportunity on a development site through, through permitting, and, and do things like eliminate parking, maximize height, really maximize the envelope of what's allowed to be built, but maybe not have an intent to actually break ground and develop on a project, and instead just maximize the value of it, and then maybe turn it over to another developer. And then that said developer would have to come in and do what we're talking about here would be, which would be, you know, finding out what they actually need within the project. And so I, I'm concerned in that regard, where, you know, what are we going to do in cases where we maybe have only investment developers, and not developers that are actually going to, going to construct a building, or owner, owner-operate it? And, and simply, again, just maximizing the, the value of it. Wanted to see staff's thoughts on that, and how we were thinking about it, if we were, and how we might be able to address that.
Yeah, so I don't, so this, I mean, this, this is a sort of business model that happens a lot. A lot of the, quote, developers that we see in San Jose, or are not necessarily developers, they are entitlementers, right? And so that, they, they're correct. They actually entitle a property. And then, you know, one thing I learned from the ULI real estate course is like, the best time to get out and make your money without a lot of risk is sell the entitlement to somebody else and, and get out of town. So that does happen. But just keep in mind that if the, the market has to support the project that's entitled, whatever it is, including the level of parking that is or is not provided. So, you know, someone who's going to buy an entitlement, I mean, you know, it's being in the development business, as some of our panel is probably going to attest, is a very risky business. And so, you know, the value of that project and the willingness of someone to buy it is going to be based on, hey, do we think the market's going to support this? And is, are, can I get finance, and therefore can I get financing for the project? So, not to say that this couldn't happen, but if someone's building a, whatever it could be, a pipe dream project, we saw one of those kind of in the Santana Row area at one point. You know, if it's not something the market will want, you know, even though it's just an entitlement, it won't probably get built.
So you think the market as well then would naturally even regulate that? Because if, even if you're just an entitlementer, you may risk not being able to sell that entitlement, is what you're saying? Because you've, you've sort of, you've now gotten something entitled that is, is not realistic?
Yeah, yeah, it might be difficult to sell it, or you might sell it, you might, someone might buy it, but they're not going to buy it at like, holy smokes, I'm going to buy a 20-story tower that's worth this dollar. It's like, well, we're not going to be able to build a 20-story tower with no parking in this marketplace. So I'm not going to pay for what, you know, that 20-story tower marketplace. I'm going to pay X to reflect what I think could actually be built on the property.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then they probably come back to either modify the entitlement that they have, to change it to reflect market conditions, or maybe come up with a brand-new entitlement. The value of the entitlement could be that, hey, you can get away with building something pretty intense here. That's good to know. That's worth more than, oh, I could just put a single family house here. But, so, but I think the market will sort of deal with this issue.
Yeah, that was, and maybe that can come up in the panel as well. But I mean, that, that was my thinking. Now granted, I'm, I'm not an entitlementer, not a developer, so I don't know exactly. That's why I'm asking these questions. But my thought, and from what I've seen on entitlementers, is that, you know, you, you, you go in and you try to maximize, you know, the, the value of a development site. And if you can maximize it by reducing the cost for parking, by eliminating them, maximizing the heights, right, then in my mind, that's the maximum value of it, even if that's not exactly what could be, the market would, would sustain to develop, but it, it maximizes it. What it potentially could do, and what it may be, right, what I'm running into the example, is that we didn't have this, you know, this discussion at that point. So we didn't have this reduced or eliminated parking minimums at that point. And so when we went out, it was really going out on a limb and, and trying to see is, you know, is it, are we able to get community support? And I know Councilmember Foley was bringing that up too. But in my mind, you know, it was a struggle, but we did get community support on a zero-parking high-rise. And then, you know, lo and behold, it never actually broke ground, and, and now is attempting to even maximize some more density, and still with no parking, which, you know, again, if it's coming at a time where we're in the middle of this discussion, which I would agree that, that, you know, ideally, the market could be able to help us to determine what really is needed. In some of these speculative cases, though, where we don't even know what's going to go, you know, into the building, you know, for a particular office, in this case, it's housing. So we do know, you know, at least the, the makeup of incomes that are going to go into there. We know the area, which is great, but it just, that was one of the concerns I had, was not being able to see projects like this break ground. I would have loved to have seen this one and, and seen what that example would have been. I would agree with Councilmember Davis. I'd like to see if, you know, we can get some, some feedback from cities that, you know, have now eliminated these parking minimums for a number of years. I understand we, we got some of that feedback from Seattle, but I would agree with Councilmember Davis that if we look at, at some of the cities earlier, like Oakland, our neighbor here, and just to kind of see how that impact has been, I am, you know, more or less in favor of, of reducing or eliminating our parking minimums, and allowing our market to, to help us determine what is best. But at the same time, I do think there are valuable and reasonable concerns. And that's, that's what we're all hoping to be educated on, discussed today. So I look forward to the next part of the discussion. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. I appreciate all the good questions. I know we, we got a panel coming. I just have two questions. I swear, two. One, one is, I just want to confirm that for those developers who are bold enough, and I know this is a very costly proposition, but they're willing to build parking that can be converted, they've got the heights, they've got, they eliminated the slope and the garage, all those things. Is our building code fully enabling that? Or do we, are we creating any barriers for those convertible garages?
That's a good question, Mayor. I think we'll have to dig in that a little more. I understand. So I believe our citywide parking guidelines at least encourage that you build parking garages that can be convertible. And we'll have to dig, I don't have enough knowledge on the building code aspect of that. So we have to, we have to dig into that.
Yeah. Second question, and forgive the preaching, but I appreciate very much what Councilmember Davis has raised, because this notion of having a plan for TDM with 40 options encapsulates, in my mind, a lot of negotiation and back and forth. And we know how it goes, for example, on park fees, and what's private, and what's public space, and do I pay in lieu, and, and affordable housing, and all these requirements. And although we say it's concurrent, we know it becomes consecutive when that negotiation lags. And that means more delay, which is more cost, and in fact, more staff time, which is also more cost. And all of that means, I, I know we got Chris Neal waiting in the wings, would be interested in hearing a development perspective, but I think there's going to be an interesting dynamic or tension, choice we make in TDM between having a lot of flexibility for builders and having standardized TDM. And I'd like to make a brief argument for standardized TDM for just a moment. One is, you know, and it's kind of reflective, if you guys remember this book, it came out about 15 years ago called The Paradox of Choice, there are benefits in having standard options. And I think developers, if they can get out of the process more quickly, they will embrace those benefits. If you just tell me where the bar is, I'll jump over it. Don't engage me in nine months of negotiation. But secondly, I think we need to consider the network effects of TDM solutions. I'm thinking about bike share, for example, which is financially very challenged right now in this city. And if we had, in a, in a zone where we know bike share is serving, a required commitment, you're going to kick in money to bike share, that would be, I think, helpful to sustain that. Similarly, I'd love to see electric car share take off in many of our affordable housing projects. I'd love to see a requirement that we have electric car share in every affordable project. project to reduce the cost of transportation to many of the families that are living there. And again, that requires a network effect. You need to have scale and ubiquity for any of that to work, which means we need to have standardized requirements. So that's my preaching. I'd be interested in any thoughts you guys have about standardized versus flexibility. This is probably the first time and only time you'll ever hear me arguing against flexibility for developers.
Yeah, really, really great point. And something we've been trying to figure out how to, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing, right? And so how do you find the enough that is one-size-fits-all that makes standardized versus those things that should be discussed, right? And we're not interested in having long negotiations about this either, right? We would like to have it done and we, and that. So one thing I will say that we are already doing, right, we did, when we did the VMT policy, create a VMT calculator. And in there, we have roughly this set of TDM options already in there. And developers are finding that to be a useful tool to be able to engage with us. And so in a certain way, having the list itself is standardization. That being said, you're saying, sure, 40 options. Yeah, 40 options is that. I think that there are either zonally, zonal ways to do that. Downtown Bike Share, you know, North San Jose Bike Transit Passes, right? And so I think that we could probably approach that from an area's perspective, because, you know, what do you do in Evergreen or something like that, right? It is different, right? And so I think standardized across the city would be, I don't know, making a cookie cutter, that's just not going to work. Whereas making its own really could work.
Yeah, point well taken. Thank you. And I know there's a lot more thought to go in and all that. And so I know we have a panel coming up next. Let me just offer, I am a little concerned about whatever exemption we're getting to single-family builders below 15 units. I think there's a lot of profit margin there, and I'm not sure I'd want to exempt them from at least paying into TDM since they are creating more per capita vehicle miles traveled than other, for example, multifamily builders. So I just want to throw that out there for consideration. I think that we have exhausted the questions, so it's probably a good time.
I had my hand up, but I'm happy to wait, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Councilmember Mahan, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can wait if you want to move to the panel.
Go ahead and jump in.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good morning. Thanks for the great presentation. I think you made a really strong case. Totally agree on the standardization. I was, I like network effects even better. I was going to argue that maybe we could consolidate around a few strategies and just be more coordinated. And I think, I think the mayor was making the exact same point, whether it's Bike Share, electric car share, whatever it is, what strategies. And that actually leads to my first question, which is, what have we learned from our current TDM strategies? Do we know which ones are getting the most uptake, promoting the most mode shift, where they're working? I mean, if we, do we have learnings?
We are developing a report right now that will elucidate that to you soon. When I was talking about those three different policy things that we're working on, we're working on that five-dash-one update right now, and we'll bring that information to you soon. I don't have it at the moment.
Okay. Is there a rough timeline, just out of curiosity?
We are seeing, you should see it in January as well.
January, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just curious, as a, maybe a philosophic point, why eliminate minimums versus just lowering them? What is the, what's the thought process there?
What's the basis? What is the basis of making another minimum? Right now, they're arbitrary. They're based on national statistics that are built and as well as downtown Minneapolis as suburban Houston. And the, another basis is just another arbitrary number. And so what we're doing instead is saying, look, let's work with the development community and the community surrounding to figure out what the right number is. Any, just like a maximum, it's going to feel like an arbitrary number, one way or the other. And again, coming up with a particular minimum, based on what? And is that really going to be the right cookie cutter? What we've seen is the cookie cutter that is out there in the industry doesn't fit for us, right? And so, you know, we could always try and find another one. But this offers us the maximum amount of flexibility, as well as a market-driven approach to allowing this to happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And maybe it's too hard to know. I guess I would offer that maybe the basis would be utilization rates. I found the numbers you shared around the 25% unused onsite at peak, which is nighttime, right, for those developments to be very compelling. But to Councilmember Foley's point, those were concentrated. And so is that true for a multi-unit dwelling such as the one going on, being built on Blossom Hill Road down in District 10? I don't know. I mean, I hope so. If it's also 25%, then maybe that argues for a standardized approach, a one-size-fits-all approach across the city, where we just across-the-board eliminate the minimum. But if it turns out the utilization rates are really high in some parts of the city and are 25% unused in other areas, then maybe that would argue for more differentiation, I suppose. So I share Councilmember Foley's question on, is that truly, is that what we're seeing across the city?
Yeah. Could I respond to that, right? So if we look at utilization rates as they are now, and we're trying to say we need to reduce the amount of driving in the city, which is a clear goal from our general plan and from many, many, many policies in the city and the state at this point, we're locking in current use patterns. And so looking at current use patterns is saying, we believe that what we're doing now is the right thing. And I don't think that that's what our policies say.
So that gets to my next question, actually, which is, what are the, maybe this gets to the panel, what are the assumptions we're making about investments in transit from VTA, for example? Because I would agree with you that the current pattern is not ideal and we want to shift it. But I guess the reason I'm reacting to a standardized policy across the entire city is just given the diversity of the city and just given how different an area like Almaden is, where we've fought to keep the last bus line and the bus runs once every 45 minutes versus San Carlos Street. I mean, there are really significant differences in the city. And so I'm just, I'm curious what assumptions we're making about other investments, if we're going to really, if we're going to facilitate this change that I think we all want. I think we do have to be pragmatic about what we think is going to take.
Yeah. So we're looking at some of those questions in the access and mobility plan work and really trying to figure out how the city plays the most productive role in those conversations. We aren't the VTA, but half of you guys are the board, right? And so, you know, how do we, how do we as the city take our role seriously within that? Because transit isn't only slow because VTA is doing things wrong, right? Transit is slow because we didn't do a whole bunch of things as well, right? And so there's a lot of interplay there. And we're doing our absolute hardest to find as much new transit dollars as we can. We spend a lot of time on that, as well as other transportation investments. So we'll be offering counsel, the larger perspective within the access and mobility plan in about January next year. And a lot of you have already talked with us about that, that I think will help us flesh out the question you're asking.
Thanks. And then in the interest of time, I'll just close with one other point and question. I think a component of social equity that we probably don't talk about enough is actually age. And I'm very sensitive to that, you know, speaking with residents in my district where we very much have an aging population. I'm curious if older residents and their voice has been part of the stakeholder process yet, and if there's any particular thought with this policy that goes into where our, I'm sure there's a, I'm not sure if the distribution's even or not, but just how we're taking into account the needs of seniors in particular. Because a half-mile from a rail station is great for me and my kids, but not for a lot of my residents.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So when we, we did a number of, you know, 30 or so meetings kind of across the span of the last two years, focusing on all demographics across the city, we did neighborhood association meetings, we did virtual workshops, forums, in-person events, and heard from a wide spectrum of stakeholders, including kind of aging folks, young folks, you know, trying to get an accurate read on what it is that different constituents need in San Jose. And I think what we'd like to come back to here is that transportation demand management or rightsizing parking, it's about choice. It's about mobility choice for the individual. And so, you know, while we're saying parking will be built, you know, in an adequate and sufficient amount in new development, we're also saying that mobility options provided through TDM can also afford, you know, new opportunities for folks who may, you know, look to decide to use them. So it's, I think right now, you know, the way I view it is, we're kind of locked into one system, and it's really about broadening the system, balancing the system, and opening up opportunities for a variety of different folks, kind of wherever they are. So in instances around, you know, parking unbundling, for example, one in 10 families in San Jose does not own a vehicle. And so, sorry, one in 12 families, households in San Jose does not own a vehicle. So we're saying here, you know, parking unbundling could be, you know, a pretty significant opportunity for that household having to not pay into parking that they're not actually using. So it's, the idea is just kind of creating that space for the choice ultimately.
Yeah. And just to put a slightly finer point on, don't get me wrong, I think there are a ton of potential benefits. I think the case here is really compelling. But maybe to be more specific, as we look at those 40-some TDM strategies, are there some in there that we think are really going to help our aging population? And could you just highlight one of those, just so I have a better awareness of that?
Certainly. Yeah. So one would be a neighborhood shuttle. So it's something that would kind of circulate. And obviously, this is really supported and furthered by, you know, autonomous vehicles, for example, things that potentially we would be seeing in the next, you know, five to 10 years. So, you know, it's like a paratransit, but.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. And so maybe if we're programmatically trying to, you know, push a strategy like Bike Share in downtown, maybe it may be more of a shuttle strategy down in the parts of the city that I'm representing.
And also, you know, just mention an adjacent effort happening within the Department of Transportation is our Emerging Mobility Action Plan. And that plan is really honing in on kind of what are the mobility needs of our underserved populations, one of which is obviously, you know, elderly. How can we best accommodate their mobility needs? And one of the things that's come out of that is, is a desire to not see electric Bike Share, but actually e-cargo share for mothers, perhaps, who would like to pick their children up from school, who'd like to go get groceries. So we'd like to keep the TDM program flexible enough to accommodate these options that perhaps our community members are going to be raising in the future.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, great. Well, thank you and thanks, Mayor.
That is appreciated for those of us who are rapidly heading into old age. So thank you. Yes. So I wanted to say thank you to the entire team. Do I have the privilege of introducing our panelists? Okay. Or would you like to do that, Michael?
Oh, well, so I was just going to introduce Amanda.
Oh, okay, great.
Who's then going to introduce the panelists. But I first want to just acknowledge Emily Reslin, doing amazing work. She's actually leaving us. This is her last day. She's going to be a deputy director for Office of Planning Research in Sacramento. So, you know, this is it. We're going to go to Ludwig's after this and drink a lot. So if you want to join us.
Congratulations, Amanda.
After 5:00 PM.
Yeah, after 5:00 PM, of course, right. Okay, so I'll introduce Amanda. So Amanda Ekin is the Director of Transportation for the Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge at the National Resources Defense Council, NRDC, where she leads a team supporting 25 American cities to decarbonize their transportation systems. She is also lead for developing NRDC's National Climate Strategy for Transportation. Appointed by San Francisco's Mayor London Breed, she serves as vice chair at the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency Board of Directors, overseeing and governing San Francisco's public transit, streets, taxis, and parking assets. She was named a 40-under-40 business leader by the San Francisco Business Times and honored with the President's Award for Sustainable Leadership by the Southern California Association of Governments. Prior to working at NRDC, she managed construction of affordable housing projects in San Francisco. So welcome, Amanda.
Okay, thank you so much, Michael. I'm going to check with the masks. It can be difficult. Can you all hear me okay? All right, great. So good morning, Mayor Licardo. Good morning, Vice Mayor Jones. Good morning, councilmembers. It is such an honor to be with you in person. This is such an unusual experience. So it's wonderful to see your faces and be in this space with you this morning. And thank you all for your public service and your attention and your very intelligent and probing questions on this issue. Again, my name is Amanda Ekin with the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm going to be your moderator today for this panel, and it's a great honor because this is a really esteemed panel. Before I introduce the panelists, I just want to offer a few quick perspectives to you for today. So it has been, first of all, an honor and a privilege to partner with the City of San Jose over the last three years as part of the American Cities Climate Challenge. You notice I'm wearing my San Jose t-shirt today. For those who are less familiar, the Climate Challenge is a three-point, three-and-a-half-year, $100 million accelerator program funded by Bloomberg philanthropies. And we created a national challenge open to the 100 largest cities in the US to support you to take ambitious climate action. We opened up a competition and San Jose's proposal was so strong, it made it a very easy decision to accept San Jose into this program and provide you with resources to accelerate your climate action. And they've all just stepped away, but I do just want to acknowledge you have, wherever they are, you have a phenomenally strong staff team working for you. They're doing really standout work that on the national level is showing up, San Jose as a climate leader. So as far back as the fall of 2018, Bloomberg and NRDC and the whole team came to San Jose, and we put up on the wall a bunch of ideas for how we could work together through this Climate Challenge. And we looked at all kinds of different transportation policies and programs. The consensus of the room was parking. Parking is really San Jose's next big move in terms of your climate leadership. And so it's just so great to be here three years later, looking at this policy and moving forward towards implementation. So the Climate Challenge has provided technical assistance and stakeholder support to make sure to vet this concept. And so what's coming before you today, I just want to make sure you understand, has been vetted. There was a ULI Technical Assistance Panel. There's a lot of evolution to get it to the place before you today. I also just wanted to put, as part of a national program, put San Jose's leadership in the national context. You saw up on the screen some of the other cities. One that was missed up there was Honolulu. Last year additionally moved as part of their affordable housing crisis to eliminate parking requirements. And then it was just last week that St. Paul, Minnesota, did a very similar action to San Jose, eliminating minimum parking requirements and adopting a TDM ordinance. Finally, just before we dive in, I just can't help but sort of step back and remind us all of the larger context that we're living through right now as we talk about the future of transportation and land use and climate in San Jose. Lake Tahoe, which is a summertime oasis, is experiencing some of the worst air quality in the entire world right now, and its residents are fleeing and they're scared. We're seeing fires all over the world. We're seeing water sources drying up, and we're seeing severe storms. And personally, it's really scary. And I sometimes think, what are we going to do about all this? And that's sort of where you all come in. You're all sitting in a position of power and a lot of privilege to act on climate, to do something about it. When we're all reading the news and feeling so scared, you get to do something about it. And that's a very, very powerful and privileged position. So we're just so happy to be with you here today to talk about San Jose's next big step in your climate leadership journey and how you can continue to cement your legacy as a climate leader in the nation and also in the world. So with those remarks, I want to introduce our panel. Elma Arredondo is the co-chair for a community-based organization called Alam Rock Urban Village Association, or ARUVA. And ARUVA envisions development that is visionary, inclusive, and based on community input. She is also the president of the Las Mari Posas Home Owners Association, which is an affordable housing development built for first-time homebuyers from low and moderate income levels. And she's also a 30-year employee at San Jose State University, where she's a programmer and analyst in the IT division. Rick Dishnikah, if you can say hello, is the president of the Dishnikah Company. It's focused on infill housing, both for sale and for rent in the Bay Area, and also real estate consulting. He's also a trustee of the Urban Land Institute, and where he's been a member and vice chair. And he was instrumental in pulling together the Technical Assistance Panel of experts that did a deep dive on San Jose's proposed parking changes and brought a lot of expert perspectives before you and your colleagues. Chris Neal is the president of the Core Companies. He is, it's a holding company for Core Homes, Core Affordable, Residential, and Builders. And he's responsible for the full spectrum of their development activities, including acquisition, entitlement, financing, and construction. He has, during his career, completed a broad range of very complicated development projects that will be expertise he will draw on today. And his examples range from a regional transit-oriented master plan community assembling 25 acres with six different property owners to small-lot, single-family urban infill projects. Rob Swark is a principal transportation planner in the Planning Programming Division at the Valley Transportation Authority. And his work at VTA focuses on land use and transportation integration, congestion management, and reducing vehicle miles traveled. He collaborates with the county and cities, including San Jose, and is the over 20 years of experience split between the public sector and private consulting firms. And finally, Justin Wang is the advocacy manager at the Green Belt Alliance, which is a regional conservation and urban planning nonprofit. And outside of his four years as an undergraduate at UCLA, he is a lifelong South Bay resident. His work- His work focuses on empowering Bay Area residents to build a more climate-resilient and equitable future through robust engagement and capacity building. So this is your Parking All-Stars panel. If you can welcome them. Thank you all for being here. So, I'm gonna kick off with sort of the basics. Justin, I would love to hear you talk a little bit about sort of just why are we here? Why are we talking about parking? Why should anybody even care about parking? And if you're a person who cares about the environment, why should you care about parking? And why is this ordinance important?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, if anyone wants to know why they should care about parking, they should watch the city staff presentation, because that was incredible. But specifically from an environmental perspective, I think, you know, we just need to look at the weather outside, right? Like the wildfires that we're experiencing, the smoke, sea level rise, the urban heat on effect, which, as we know, is exacerbated by surface parking lots, parking garages, all this concretizing of our cities. You know, all these extreme climate hazards that we're experiencing are, have been exacerbated by the, the planning decisions that we've made. And given that 3 million homes in California are in fire severity zones, you know, there's a real, real human cost to these decisions that we make. When we push families out into, into the wildland urban interface because of our planning decisions, we are, we're putting lives at risk. And in absolute terms, I also want to highlight this, in the nine-county Bay Area, the Santa Clara County actually has the highest greenhouse gas emissions out of any other county. This is in part due to the fact that we have higher population, but I also think that means that we have a higher burden to bear. We really need to be leaders in the way that we're addressing our climate crisis. So, in conjunction with that, the fact that San Jose's population is projected to increase by 40% in the next, in the next two decades, which, again, increases the need to optimize our transit decisions, our housing decisions. And by implementing this policy, and by implementing a policy which increases flexibility, which enables options for people, we're actually able to, to make a more efficient use of land and our community resources. And again, this enables us to, to reduce sprawl, which has another benefit of reducing our VMTs, of reducing, you know, the climate hazard that we're seeing. And this is especially impactful for our frontline communities, for our residents, whether they're low-income, elderly, all these, all these intersections of identities that are disproportionately impacted by the climate hazards that we see today. You know, and, you know, just another point, you know, from the conservation perspective, you know, sprawl is really, I don't think any of us here wants to see that, right? That's why we protected Coyote Valley. That's why Coyote Valley has been front and center in the conversation in San Jose for years. And, you know, whether we're talking about Alvisa or so many other places where we don't want to be sprawling out, we need to talk about policies like this that make that possible. And, yeah, I mean, I'll leave it at that for now. But just again, I just want to say again, this is, this policy is one that, it falls in the footsteps of Climate Smart San Jose. You know, this, this bold visionary move that San Jose did to, to position itself as a climate leader, this is how we do it. This is the piece of the puzzle that we need to be unlocking. So, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I'd like to turn to you next, Rob Swark with VTA. Almost every city in the Bay Area, and from my experience, every city we work with across the nation, has a goal to reduce reliance on private vehicles and increase transit ridership. That you'll see that in almost every climate plan. Everybody agrees that's what we've got to do. So, your agency is the transit agency for the Regent. Would love to hear you speak about the connection between parking, the parking ordinance we're talking about today, and transit ridership, and what's the most helpful way that the City of San Jose could help more people move by cleaner transportation choices?
Sure. Thank you. It's a great question. And I think, first, I wanted to just acknowledge that VTA, as an organization, absolutely sees the importance of transit, part of this, you know, a piece of the puzzle here, part of the, the solution to help make this policy or this, this policy change that's being considered effective and, you know, get the full benefit. So, you know, I, I think what I would say is that we see the policy changes that are being considered here as to be things that can help create a virtuous cycle where basically you have less land dedicated to parking in a given amount of space. If you think of our transit stations in the South Bay, they're precious commodities. We don't have that many of them, and many of them are occupied right now by surface parking, areas that are not very walkable or bikeable because of that surface parking. So, you create a virtuous cycle by replacing some of that, you know, having less parking, more units, more jobs, you know, more residents in proximity to transit, you know, generate more transit riders. And the TDM piece actually feeds into that. It incentivizes more transit ridership and just generally a sort of a car-light lifestyle. When you do that, you actually generate transit ridership and revenue, which can help feed back into, you know, for instance, supporting the service that exists now, hopefully improving the frequencies of the service in the future. And, you know, to Councilmember Mahan's point earlier, it is, you know, it's, it's certainly a good question about, we can have robust discussions, I think, in the, in the future about where and, you know, in what parts of the city VTA will be able to provide the most robust transit service, but we definitely have a commitment to, for instance, the, the frequent, the high-quality transit network that exists now, you know, the 15-minute network, and to investments like BART Phase Two, Light Rail Extension to East Ridge and so forth. They all kind of work together in this virtuous cycle.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Elma, I'd like to come to you next, thinking about the community perspective. Your organization, ARUVA, envisions visionary and inclusive development based on community input. Can you help us to understand what kind of development you envision? And what's the connection between the parking requirements we're discussing today and achieving your vision?
Thank you. I'm co-chair of ARUVA. Like you said, it's Alum Rock Urban Village Advocates, a neighborhood group of residents, business owners, and allies concerned about the lack of a robust community-based development plan for the Alum Rock corridor between King Road and Jackson Avenue. The Alum Rock corridor is extremely densely populated, about 15,000 people per square mile, which is the density of the City of San Francisco. This corridor is by far the most overparked, urbanizing area in San Jose, with 69% of households having three or more vehicles. And as far we, as we know, no other neighborhood is even close. ARUVA wants the opportunity for community residents and business owners to work in collaboration with the city and the planning department in developing a vision for development that occurs in this village. We want a robust urban village plan, which addresses the quality of life of its residents and should work for residents and business owners and not just for developers. ARUVA developed an equitable plan for development where we emphasize authentic community input from the beginning to the end of a project, affordability where at least 50% of the, on the entire footprint of our urban village be affordable to existing households within the 95116 zip code area, which translates to units being built at very low income and extremely low income standards. We want to see local preference measures to combat anti-displacement for existing residents from their homes, and for at least 75% of our existing non-industrial businesses to, to remain on the corridor. We want culturally inspired and vibrant, vibrant places where the project's architecture celebrates the cultural legacies of our community. We want our village to be a welcoming and walkable environment for all, where at least five acres of open spaces for public gatherings, recreation, and relaxation are collectively found throughout our village. We want healthy, healthy, sustainable development where onsite toxins have been identified, removed, and certified as complete by governing agencies, and where a, a project incorporates measurable green building features. Developments should contribute toward the goal of at least 15% of all new retail space across the entire urban village area be dedicated and affordable for nonprofit and community service organizations. In these spaces, we organize, we prioritize organizations that focus on community safety, preserving, celebrating our cultural gifts, and providing services to youth and seniors. In terms of traffic and parking, traffic mitigation measures must be enacted to ensure traffic flows throughout the construction and completion of a project. And very importantly, we want to ensure that any development of new housing and businesses does, does not result in additional parking congestion in the neighborhoods bordering our village. We do not believe that our Alum Rock community-defined priorities are necessarily reflected in the proposed ordinance change. It will be argued that this policy contributes to affordable housing by removing the construction costs associated with, with parking spaces. And somehow, not providing parking spaces along with TDM strategies will reduce additional traffic or parking congestion into the neighborhoods. The proposal doesn't address some fundamental realities on the ground that would only be worsened by the, the proposal. One, for a variety of reasons that cannot be ignored, the proposal will, will reduce the average rate of parking spaces per housing unit, which will in turn exacerbate, exacerbate the already congested parking in the surrounding neighborhoods. In terms of affordable housing, we do not have a local preference, which means that our residents will not move into affordable units. And density, housing, and parking in our neighborhoods continues. One reason that parking problems in the surrounding areas will be worsened is due to the inadequate public transit that is available now, and most likely for decades to come. Existing public transit is wholly inadequate to serve as a viable alternative for most working-class car users living in San Jose. The Alum Rock community has all been, has always been one of the largest users of public transit, but nothing on the horizon, horizon suggests that significant improvements will be made in the next 10 to 20 years. Third, over time, electric vehicles are becoming even more popular mode of transportation. This is driven by people's readiness to take personal action to fight climate change. As this electric car industry matures, the affordability of these cars will become more attractive to lower-income people. The expansion of the electric car industry is supported by the federal and state governments and their private sectors, partners. Electric car sales will substantially increase over time, thus creating more demand for parking spaces. Further studies are needed to accurately understand the probabilities of extremely low and very low-income households choosing to abandon their cars entirely. Without adequate public transit in place, lower-income working, working-class people will continue to rely on cars as their primary mode of transportation at higher rates than higher-income people. Working-class people could be construction and other survey workers in need of vehicles to haul their equipment, those who work two to three jobs to make ends meet, to make ends meet, and must quickly reach those work destinations, those who, those who do work irregular shifts, not the typical day shift, and mothers who must get their children to daycare, school, and themselves to work. To enact the proposed parking change without, with these on-the-ground realities at this time will only negatively affect most lower-income households. The elimination of parking requirement and leaving the developers to determine the best parking for a development is currently, currently a recipe for hardship on lower-income community.
Okay, thank you so much. I think we heard, we heard a number of key themes that we may want to circle back to in the staff follow-up around community engagement, public transit, and impacts on low-income households. So let's just put a marker on those. I would like to now come to our developer experts, Rick and Chris. Could you help us to understand how the parking requirements and the TDM proposed today impact the Core Company or your peers in the development community's ability to develop and construct housing in San Jose? And what kind of implications this might have for the city's ability to provide housing to meet future growth expectations?
All right, good morning. Thank you, Amanda. Um, permit it's off. There you go. Thank you. So appreciative of being, including this panel and having the broad range of experience, right? Because we want to set something up, housing will not get developed in the community if we don't have something that's successful for both the community residents and the developers who are trying to create change. It's very difficult to be a change agent, and creating housing is, is, is a difficult impact to a community. So I encourage us to have that in mind. We need to find some solution that allows both to succeed together. Councilmember Peral has made a good point. You know, I'm here today, Core has developed in San Jose for over 40 years. We've developed over 5,000 homes. We're very proud of the jobs and the homes that we've created. We do a lot of affordable housing. We've done market rate rental and ownership, affordable rental and ownership, mixed income. So I'm bringing that experience to, to this discussion today. I'm also a board member of SPUR and SV at Home. So those are kind of the lenses I'm bringing to the conversation today, and I acknowledge there's a bias with those points of view. I just think fundamentally, reducing or eliminating the parking minimums will be a very significant support to creating more supply. And if that's a, if that's a key goal or outcome from this process, I think that's beneficial. And I think fundamentally, that's just, the, the guidelines are so old and antiquated. I mean, I think they're from the 60s, 70s, or 80s. So I think it's, it's time to revise them. I think that the, the challenge is the process and the TDMs. And I've had a lot of dialogue with staff. My concern is, do the TDMs become part of a burden as well and create another complex process, an additional cost? I think one thing to remember as you go through this process from a developer, a capital cost upfront is very different than an ongoing cost. There's almost a 25x multiplier. So if you had $100 ongoing, you have to multiply that by 25 to be able to compare it to a capital cost upfront. So it's very important to track what cost you're trying to manage. Regarding, I do think right now in San Jose, there are tools to lower affordable, lower parking ratios. I mean, for example, there's the one near Deeredon that had a zero parking ratio. As you think about these, I would encourage you to consider both the projects you've seen come through for approval, but also the groundbreakings you've participated in. Because my opinion is that San Jose is not ready for a project with no parking today because the transit is not there, but you might be seeing several come through for approval without any parking. So as you consider these comments, I would also consider, projects I've seen get built, what are the qualities of projects that are actually getting built today, which are very different than projects that are actually getting approved today for entitlements? Because many are not converting to construction. It is very hard to develop and start projects today. I mean, there's an element of the pandemic, but to be honest with you, it was very difficult pre-COVID. Construction costs were soaring pre-COVID, and they're, ironically, they've continued to soar throughout. Regarding affordable housing, there's a state density bonus that allows parking reduction. So, there are tools in hand today without this policy that support lower parking ratios in affordable housing. We've, we've utilized them, and most of our affordable housing projects have parking ratios between .5 to 1.0. And I think they, they have been very successful. I think the caveat I'd put on that is if it's a large family and the community and affordable housing is incenting some large family, there's a big difference between parking ratios for a studio or one-bedroom versus a family. So I find the dwelling unit conversation, I think, is challenging because all units are not created equal. So I think that has a big difference on the parking ratios by dwelling unit. Affordable housing in the Bay Area is currently the least successful in securing the final state resources to build housing. So any risk of adding new cost to affordable housing is making it, will make something that's extremely difficult today even more difficult in the future. There was just a last round of bond allocation in, at the state level. The Bay Area had 33 projects apply, and only 11 secured the critical last funding to start construction. So it was a, what, a 33% success ratio? If you compare that to other parts of the state where their costs are much lower, Southern California, LA, Inland Empire, were almost an 80% success rate. So the cost to construct in the Bay Area and San Jose is a significant impediment to starts. And so if I apply that to, to market rate, that would be the concern, is the lower parking ratio is critical to be able to start new projects, but if we replace it with new costs, my concern is you still won't get any new starts. So I think from the, the builder community, the support for reducing the parking ratios, I think those who are building housing right now, I think would have, would have parking. They would not design projects that don't have parking. I think parking is important and critical. I think the consumers want it. And I'll close with kind of one anecdotal example. We have a project, it's probably started eight to 10 years ago. It's in downtown San Jose. It's called Spark, 105-unit project in downtown San Jose. It was parked, we had the range to park it at a .75 ratio or a 1.0 ratio. And I want, this is not necessarily an example of all commercial development, but it's one example, which is to secure our equity. It was not the debt who had an opinion on parking ratios, it was our equity. And the equity was concerned about that we had too low of a parking ratio. And their opinion was not necessarily about our project. The question is, well, what does everyone else around you have? And if you're gonna be competing with 1.5, 2.0 parking ratios, that was their concern. So we worked with staff to design, and we had the ability to add stackers. And so we, we could have saved the money and not had the stackers in, or we could have implemented the stackers. So we implemented the stackers. We leased up during COVID, it has a one-to-one parking ratio with stackers, and it's been very successful. So I think it's a good example of a project that was able to get that parking ratio in the downtown, and it has been success, a qualified success given the fact it was able to lease up during COVID. My concern for that one, if you apply it to the current TDM guidelines, it would actually incur additional cost. And so I guess my, my comment is, in support of reducing the parking requirements, but- And so I guess my comment is, in support of reducing the parking requirements, but being extremely thoughtful about applying additional cost to the project to the offset. Thank you.
Great. So I'll just flag for staff again, there seem to be some cost questions coming up, and I know we've seen previous materials around cost comparisons on parking and the TDM. Maybe you can speak to that at the conclusion of this panel. Rick, would you like to add anything to this question about the views of the parking regulations under discussion and how that will affect growth and development in San Jose?
Our recommendations in our study had three major items: just-right parking, right sizing. We recommended eliminating parking minimums, soft and reasonable parking maximums, and data gathering and community engagement. Our second major theme was one-size-does-not-fit-all. Scaling recommendations for office and commercial, tiered parking reduction strategies, and flexible toolkits were two of the supportive elements. The third and final was one-size-does-not-fit-all scaled recommendations for residential and mixed use. Building in the ability to adapt, identifying underused existing opportunities. I reflected on that in the post-pandemic environment that we're in, and I've talked to a lot of people over the last couple of years, listened and tried to understand it. And the concluding comment, I would say, with regard to the broad bush, is to say the world has changed, but no one knows to the extent of how much. Working from home is now an acceptable and desirable business strategy. Pop-outs or parklets have been accepted by the market. And the biggest one is major automakers have announced significant goals within the next 10 to 20 years of converting the vehicles they manufacture from internal combustion engines to electric. So how does that impact just-right parking? I think it's even more critical today since all the studies plus the stakeholder interviews may no longer be relevant, but they might, just don't know. But the main thing I would emphasize is data gathering and community engagement. You've done that already. Continue to do it. Gather the facts. Measure the results. It's important to understand what's changed in today's environment. You need to know what the workdays will be to adjust your demand and supply analysis. Will this be temporary or permanent? Continue to gather information and get the facts from all the employers, small to large. My personal observation is that this change in the work environment will be permanent, albeit I don't know exactly what that means. Employers and employees will figure out ways to be more flexible in coming to the office, both in days and times of the day. The concept of pop-outs and parklets, it's a new concept that began, was very limited pre-pandemic, but it's exploded during the pandemic, probably more a matter of survival than anything else. But customers seem to like it. What do the restaurants think? How many parking spaces, places on streets with restaurants have been lost to pop-out parklets? If they are permanent, then your models need to be adjusted, and small surface lots need to be integrated into the commercial street grid. If you don't provide parking, then some small-scale retail businesses may suffer due to the lack of easily accessible parking. I think pop-outs may prove to be a very good strategy for energizing the streets. People like to walk up and down the streets. They like to be able to kind of meander. When you drive by things, you just miss it. It's important to measure the parking demand based upon each neighborhood and look for infill locations for small surface lots to offset the loss of surface parking. This doesn't necessarily need to be one-to-one, but those are questions you need to ask. Reducing car usage was a driving factor in the reducing fossil fuels to satisfy the climate action goals, which I think is a great idea, but again, what's happening to change that? What happens if people just switch to electric cars and parking has been significantly reduced? Will there be a parking deficit? Will this ultimately impact the San Jose's economic development goals for new office and retail? I believe that this conversation will take place over a time period shorter than we thought when we conducted our study because the major automakers are enthusiastically embracing it. However, the law of unintended consequences may occur by reducing parking to the address the internal combustion engine cars when people will just substitute electric cars for fossil-fueled cars. This could have a major impact for achieving your commercial and retail economic development goals. I'm posing these questions because I think they have to be asked. None of us really know the outcomes. We're in a transition period. The last element, I would say, is using transit versus the private automobile is a health issue that all individuals will consider. Will people return to pre-pandemic use of mass transit? I'd say maybe, but the return to transit usage will take longer than we might like. I think everybody's thinking about, you know, how much exposure do I need to put myself through? I happen to use mass transit on a frequent basis when I go into the city of San Francisco. I've noticed a significant reduction. Now granted, there's no activity in the city of San Francisco to speak of, so that's a part of it, but I also notice a reticence on a lot of people's part because of the health concerns. So these are things that will play out. I think you just have to take them into consideration as you move forward. And from our perspective, the study we did was a pre-pandemic study, and I just think there are continuing questions, and I want to emphasize again, data gathering, community engagement, and measuring results and outcomes.
Great. Rick, could you just remind us who was part of that ULI panel, or at least some of the perspectives that were represented on that expert panel you convened?
Sure. We had residential market rate and affordable developers. We had commercial developer, a local person actually. We had financiers, and I'm trying to think, we had a land planner and an architect. So we had kind of a broad cross-section, so we talked from a broad overview policy perspective, and then we talked about boots-on-the-ground. I'll remember specifically one internal conversation we had between Eric Tao, who represents the market rate housing, and Mary Murtaugh, who represents affordable housing. We were driving to the east, and we went by an intersection where there's a large shopping center, which very few people parked in it during a kind of a midday, which we would have thought would have been pretty high to utilize. And Eric says, you know, I can create an opportunity here to build a housing site over on this corner, and I can build some stackers, and I can make it a flexible alternative to present it as a down-the-stream changeover if there's an additional need for other alternatives. And Mary started debating the point about the affordable housing perspective, and we got into the discussion of, say, low-income seniors, and you've made the point very articulately, family size of apartments are critical, be they for sale or for rent, makes no difference. If you have all seniors that are in studios, many of whom don't have cars, that's a different dynamic dramatically. A lot of the senior projects provide off-site buses from their own location. So there's a lot of different things that are going on that you really need to drill down to. But out of that discussion between Mary and Eric came the conversation about the adaptive reuse of some of these underutilized shopping centers, and I think that's well documented in a case study discussion in our report.
Great. Thank you. I just want to underscore, the recommendations of the panel were to eliminate minimum parking requirements, and also to think about soft and flexible parking maximums. We're not going as far as parking maximums right now, and many of the questions, concerns I heard this morning were related to if we had parking maximums, so just wanted to clarify that's not. The panel was there, but we're not going there today yet with this ordinance change. Rick, you spoke about sort of the future, what does the future hold? None of us knows. It's a fascinating question. Are we going to stay working from home? Is that going to work for business? Are we all going to go back in three years and forget all about this horrible nightmare? Justin, you're also our sort of youth representative on the panel, and wondered if you could just speak a little bit about, sort of from your perspective as a millennial, both how do you see mobility habits shifting from your vantage, but also just thinking personally about the affordable housing crisis in the Bay Area, how this affects you personally, and how is it something that Green Belt Alliance is working towards?
Absolutely. So I can start off anecdotally, right? You know, I went, I was in LA for college, and that's probably one of the most stereotypical cities that you need a car in, right? Well, I survived without a car, shockingly. But, you know, that's, you know, it was in college that I really started to see these mobility habits change. You know, I knew a lot of people that came from the suburbs, that came from, you know, all across the United States, and they were so used to having a car. And, you know, at first, you know, everyone has that conversation, like, oh, like, I wish, I wish I had a car, I wish I had this, I wish I had that. But as time goes on, right, you find ways around it. You find, right, you know, Uber and Lyft obviously very popular, but, you know, the school also sponsors public transit. You know, there's the big blue bus to take you to Santa Monica, and people, you know, they start developing that habit of taking public transit. You know, I personally, I skateboarded from Santa Monica all the way down to Ranch of Palos Verdes, you know, just because, you know, we didn't have a car, we couldn't drive to Long Beach, we couldn't go to Orange County. We were just like, let's, let's find something fun to do, you know, using just our own two feet. And, you know, now, out of college, you know, talking to my peers, my fellow, my friends from the area that graduated and moved back here, and now they have, a lot of them, shockingly, a lot of them have tech jobs, you know, a lot of them are doing very well for themselves, a lot of them are working from home, and they don't, you know, it's hard to generalize, right? But like, you know, some of them, there are some people that have that dream car, you know, they really wanted that Tesla, they bought a Tesla. But I would say, by and large, most of them are not, you know, they don't need a car, you know, especially if they're in a committed relationship, if they're living with their partner, you know, they don't each have a car, they share one. And a lot of times, they're only just using it for groceries. You know, I'm talking to them, and the mobility habits I'm seeing are really, really not quite the same from, you know, just from talking to my parents. And this is all anecdotally, but this is also what the data, the data shows us. Just a few figures, thank God I have my paper here. So the total distance driven per person in the United States actually peaked in 2004, and also according to data from the Federal Highway Administration, young people are consistently driving less. About a quarter of 16-year-olds had, about a quarter of 16-year-olds had a driver's license in 2017, which is a sharp decline from nearly half in 1983. And, you know, these are just a couple of figures, but I just want to illustrate the point that the data is showing that young people are driving less and less. And this is not to say that no young person drives ever, right? You know, this is, this is not to say that we don't need cars, that we don't need parking, but there is a growing demand for alternative transportation options. And, you know, one last statistic from the, yeah, which is just the proportion of the three classes, multimodal travelers tend to be largest among travelers in their late 20s and early 30s. And so this, kind of this age bracket that I'm currently sitting in for hopefully a little while longer, is, really, really does like to do things that aren't driving. And I think that, you know, like, one of my fellow panelists eloquently described, you know, this can change, you know, if you're working class, if you have all these other needs, sometimes you do need to drive. This morning, you know, you might have noticed, I came in a little bit late, I was originally planning to take the bus in to prove a point, but there was a family emergency at home, so I was running late, and I, and I had to drive, you know, and I was glad that I had that flexibility. Sometimes, you know, we do need to drive, but so much more often, we have other options at our fingertips, you know? Recently, I've been biking everywhere, whether, you know, smoke notwithstanding, not in the last couple of weeks. But for me, that's really what this policy is all about, for, and talking to my friends. It's about having these options at our fingertips that, where we're not mandated, you know, a parking minimum feels like a mandate to drive. That's what it feels like. Whereas what I, what I and my peers, people that I've talked to, really want to see is the option, you know, we want better public transit, we want to ride VTA, we want to take BART, we want to, we want to bike places. And I also want to underscore the fact that it is not just young people, that, you know, this is not the only identity or perspective that we need to take into consideration. Like we said, low-income families or low-income people, people with disabilities, seniors. I'm really glad that Councilmember Mahan brought that up, because I think that these are all crucial parts of our community that we need to, that we need to take into account. And again, some of these people may need to drive at times, and I think that that is something, you know, and that's not what we're saying here, we're not saying we can't drive ever. We're saying that let's try to support alternatives so that when people do have to drive, it isn't as pain, it's not painful. We don't, we've all had that experience of sitting on 280, you know, stuck for hours, and that, nobody, nobody wants that. And by unlocking this flexibility, we're able to provide those options to people, and that's, that's really key. And then to dive into the housing part just a little bit, as a young person who would love to own a home at some point in this place, you know, I lived in Sunnyvale my entire life, and I would want nothing more than to buy, buy a home. I don't care, it doesn't have to be a single family, you know, condo, whatever. I would, I would love to live in my community that I grew up in, and that is seemingly increasingly out of reach. And it's not just me, right? Like, I, my local high school, Fremont High School, they, a friend of mine, his son, his son just started a club that is focused on housing affordability, transportation, and sustainability. Like, these things are trickling down to, you know, it's not just college people, it's young kids that are really, really concerned about this. They have real fears that they're going to go to college, they're going to do everything right, they're going to get their degree, get a good job, and they're still not going to be able to afford, be able to afford living here. And I know that's where I'm at right now. And I think that something like this, where it can meaningfully, you know, it's proven that this can decrease the cost of housing, I think that if we care about our kids, if we care about our future, the future of our region, this is something that we really need to consider. So I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you. Just on a personal note, we're retrofitting our, I live in San Francisco, we're retrofitting our house right now and putting in a rental unit downstairs, and I didn't even think about the fact that we're not providing any parking until recently, when I realized there's no way we could do this and create a new rental unit, essentially sort of an in-law unit, if San Francisco required me to put parking there because there would be no space for it. So there are all kinds of ways that parking manifests our ability to provide that, that housing supply you're talking about.
Yeah, I totally, I remember there's a second, you know, professionally as well, not just personally, but yeah, Green Belt Alliance, you know, like, we talk about, you know, we talk about conservation, we talk about urban planning, and really making sustainable cities of the future. You know, the futures, the cities that we're going to be growing old in, that our children are going to be growing up in, you know, parking is such a big part of that. We spend, we have so much land dedicated to cars, when I think all of us want our cities to be dedicated to people. And there are real climate impacts. Like I alluded to in my first answer, right? You know, like, the vehicle miles traveled, the greenhouse gas emissions that we're seeing, you know, worsening these climate hazards, and again, it's our frontline communities that are taking the brunt, the brunt of this. We saw the flooding in San Jose, you know, these vulnerable communities that are suffering and have to pay the cost, and it's, it's just unconscionable that we don't take immediate climate action. And that's what I see this policy as. This is immediate climate, this is immediate climate action that builds our climate resilience and enables us to promote infill housing, which is what we so desperately need, getting people out of the way of wildfires, because it seems like that is going to keep on coming, unfortunately. So, thank you.
So I want to reflect on another theme that I heard from several of the council members and also several of the panelists, and that is around transit. So Rob, again, happy to have you here on the panel with us. In one way of thinking about it, requiring parking, minimum parking requirements requires developers to put a certain amount of capital into building parking spaces. The TDM strategy, on the other hand, would require developers to put that money potentially into transit, through transit passes, which has a nexus with your agency's ability to sustain service. I know, I sit on the board of a transit agency, we're facing very, very difficult financial challenges right now. So just wonder if you could think about the TDM aspect and transit, and VTA's ability to expand the transit that it sounds like many people want more of, and what's the connection between that TDM piece and transit provision?
Sure. That's a very good question, and maybe I'll just start by kind of addressing a little bit the situation that VTA finds itself in, and just reassure you that we're on, I think, a positive path. You all know that VTA, like many transit agencies around the country, was hit very hard by COVID-19. You know, many of my coworkers, frontline workers sacrificed the entire pandemic here, you know, as frontline workers, and we, we also suffered a cyber attack earlier in the year and the tragic attack at Guadalupe Yard, you know? So we are, we've gone through some rough times, but we are in a path of recovery where we are actually providing almost as much service now. 85% of the pre-COVID service, we are providing now in terms of service hours. We're actually bringing the service back to, we believe, 100% of pre-COVID levels by the early part of next year, by February of 2022, excuse me. So we think that we're already, you know, well-positioned to, you know, serve some of the riders that you were mentioning that would like to take advantage of enhanced public transit. We're well-positioned as we recover from some of these difficult times, but, you know, in terms of how the TDM piece ties in, absolutely, like, if, we see it, it's actually been a pretty successful thing. For instance, the core companies for years has, my understanding is, as new development comes in, the core companies actually, it's kind of the program of development usually subscribes to, we used to call it the VTA Eco Pass, now it's the VTA Smart Pass. And that's kind of just a win-win for everyone, right? You can provide a mobility option for the residents of development. This can also be applied, you know, it's actually at most of the universities and colleges in Santa Clara County have similar arrangements, and some of the major employers. That brings in kind of a steady type of revenue to VTA that's, you know, not, doesn't swing as much as, for instance, you know, Fairbox revenue on a given week-to-week basis. So it can help, you know, reassure that we can sustain transit service to some of the areas that, you know, that depend on VTA service, and that would like to see it expanded. I think one last thought is, you know, we're open also to creative partnerships. This is more on the employer's side, but we actually, in the lead-up, we were thinking about this before the pandemic, we were looking carefully at our express bus network, which is kind of the long-distance buses that often travel on the highway and then, you know, just drop off at a couple of occasions at the end, and finding those are not necessarily the most productive, but if we can partner with others, so we actually have struck partnerships with a couple of major entities in Moffitt. So we actually have struck partnerships with a couple of major entities, um, in Moffitt Park and at the Stanford Research Park to, you know, sustain those over time. So there's still also possibilities of kind of like we talked about before, network effects, you know? If there's the possibility of a number of developments as part of this TDM program contributing in towards transit passes, you could actually imagine, you know, generating enough revenue that you could, you know, support either increased service levels in an area or potentially, you know, kind of expanding the coverage of a route to those developments.
Okay, great. I think we're running short on time and I want to be respectful of the council members and also the public who are, I think, waiting to comment. I'm just going to close this up with a very quick lightning round. So, um, I would love to ask each panelist, as the board goes forward in the next couple of months and considers this parking, uh, policy and TDM policy, I'd like you to, you to offer two words you'd like to have them to have in mind as they think about this parking policy. Let's start with you, Chris. Great, thank you. Rick?
Gather the data and educate.
All right.
Sorry.
Alma?
Ooh, two words. Continue the study.
Great, Justin?
Climate crisis.
Rob?
Incentivize car-light travel. I know that's three or four.
Close enough. I'll say climate leadership. So thank you so much, uh, maybe we could just give a round of applause to our panelists. Great. Um, and I just want to turn to staff. Are there any of the themes or questions that came up through the panel that you would like to take a word to, um, address right now before we go to council member Q and A, or shall we go to the Q and R?
Yeah, um, thank you. I want to address kind of the earlier points raised by, uh, a number of our panelists. Just by saying and acknowledging that I think we can all attest to the fact that San Jose is really in a transition period where, you know, we, we have 50, you know, plus years of auto infrastructure that we've built up. You know, that's had a number of implications, um, in, in our lived realities and experiences today. And I think as we turn to the future, um, really what we're trying to do here is to create the vibrancy and the walkability and the affordability that, that, you know, Alma has outlined, that a number of the other panelists have outlined. Um, and that, you know, to, to the, to the lightning round that we just had, that this is a continued dialogue with each of our stakeholders here to understand the nuances and how we can best put together a set of recommendations that meets, you know, the city's goals as well as the needs of our communities, our development community as well. So, you know, this being a study session, I just kind of want to end it on, we are absolutely still in, in, in the definition phase of what these recommendations are and look forward to kind of continued collaboration with our stakeholder community.
Okay, do you want to say anything? Anything to add, Ed?
Um, I mostly, uh, in, you know, in the means of brevity, I just, you know, want to really appreciate our, our panelists for being here. Um, you know, obviously they're, they've got their own jobs, they're taking time out to be here, and I want to really say thank you to them. Um, and again, just emphasize that, you know, this is still a work in progress. I know some of you have seen some of the background data that we've provided. Um, and, you know, we really welcome the opportunity for you to comment on that and work with you to kind of get, uh, get this ordinance update, you know, at a, at a place where everyone is really, you know, excited about moving forward with it. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I know we've got questions from the, uh, the public and I know questions from the council. So could I just suggest, we're going to have more conversation with staff?
Yeah, let's go to council member questions.
Yeah, I think it would be good, what I'd like to do is to go to the public first. And because we're going to run out of time and lose council members at 12, and again, I'm sorry for interrupting. I, I do want to just very say, say very simply, thank you, thank you Alma, thank you Rick and Chris and Justin and Rob, we really appreciate your contributions today. We want to hopefully get to some council questions for you. Uh, and particularly, uh, thank you Amanda for all your work and leadership with the National Resources Defense Council. And we're going to take a photo of you to send to Mayor Breed with proudly wearing the San Jose shirt. It's awesome. Uh, we're recruiting new converts all the time. So let's go to the public and I'm going to ask that we limit public comment to one minute just so that we can just have a little time for any council additional questions. Tony?
Okay, um, we have Brian Prescott here in the council chambers.
Hello and good morning, my name is Brian Prescott. I'm a member of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition and South Bay YIMBY. Uh, I'm going to respectfully ask you to support the parking standards update in the future. Um, the one point that I like to make, I endorse all the points that have been made by staff and the nonprofits, is that land use comes first. Let me tell a story. Last year, I wanted to buy a vacuum cleaner from one of the big box stores on Monterey. So I took the bus out, got off at the bus stop, I checked on Google Maps last night. I had to walk through a half mile of parking lots to get to the store and then walk back, half mile, and now I'm carrying a vacuum cleaner. So land use comes first because even if that bus comes every 30 seconds, it's a pain in the you-know-what to use it. Um, and with our parking minimums, we make it illegal not to make life difficult for transit users. So, uh, I ask you to support it, thank you very much.
Okay, moving to Zoom, I have caller 5140.
I mean, almost three hours of talking about how you're going to take away parking? Do you really want to make this town even that much worse? I mean, who, who rides their bike besides Sam? I mean, do you people walk around with a tape measure wherever you go? You must have like a Stanley tape measure, all of you, on your, on your belt to measure things. I, I, I mean, this is like, this isn't a, this isn't a county or city of shopkeepers. It's a county or city of real estate people measuring every square foot. You are not going to be able to, to institute mass transit into a place with such urban sprawl, no matter how many villages you're going to make, it's not going to work. The light rail, you can't even get it to work right now. If you really want it to happen, do what you did in the seventies and have the buses come further into the suburbs. And it worked, we, I, I mean, I took a bus from where my school was, in the middle of suburbia America to downtown, and it was awesome. But you don't have that anymore, and this light rail is a disaster.
Tessa Woodbency?
The one word is now. Now is what we have to be thinking about because the, it's over, it's really over. Our, even our budgets, you know, fossil fuel budgets are, are done. The, uh, climate crisis is adding to our, the tipping points are using our budget for fighting the fires, for the fires themselves producing the CO2. So it's now, and we have to start at least putting up a price on, on the costs of our climate crisis by making people pay for their parking spots, that corporations should pay $1,000 and 10% more every year for the parking spot that they might be providing for their workers. Because we really have to, the transformational change is working at home, that is really what we have to do. And, you know, and then on top of it, you know, we just have to, you know, stop driving, stop flying and stop the movement of goods and get prepared for the climate crises. And no more development, no more development, and really be paying anybody who is developing housing. It has to be based on no fossil fuels and then...
Paul Soto?
Yes, I'd like to thank, uh, Alma for that document. Considering the amount of meetings that I've been to, the Chicano community has never had the opportunity to center from the community a document of such, such depth, accuracy. Uh, and there was a nobility to it, there was an understanding, a complete understanding of centering the history of San Sequeues and what has happened to the Mexicans here. So I just want to thank you and all of the time that Arruva put into creating that document, I appreciate that. Secondly, the youngster that was talking about, uh, using, youngster, there's something that you need to learn. Don't you ever speak on issues about the suffering that has gone on in this city? If number one, you went from it, number two, you can't relate to it. It is disrespectful and presumptuous to do that. Don't do it again. I take great offense to that because I experienced it then and I'm still experiencing it now.
Ryan Globus?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Ryan Globus, I live in D6, and I want to thank staff and the council for considering this. I strongly support removing parking minimums. Um, just to give an example, uh, my husband and I share a car and when he goes to the Martin Luther King Library, he bikes because it's easy to do so. Uh, there's not a giant parking lot in front of him, um, and it just sort of feels like the best way to get there. Um, but when he goes to the Coleman Shopping Center, which is surrounded by a giant parking lot, it doesn't feel safe, it doesn't feel right, and so he drives instead. And that's just a little example of how, oh, providing too much parking makes people drive more often. Uh, I would also request that for public comments, we have a list of the next speakers, so I can tell if I'm next or if there's like 100 people in front of me, that would be super awesome. Uh, thank you.
Roland?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the, um, extensive discussion. I have nothing to add, but I'd like to clarify a couple of step, of first step responses. Um, first of all, the definition of a transit ridge is a minimum of one bus every 15 minutes. Uh, my comment here is good luck with that. Uh, second, the observation that 25% of rental parking is unused at night is quite frankly offensive. Most of these places are used during the day by shift workers, including janitors, people working in distribution centers or stacking shelves in Safeway and Costco's, et cetera. How are these, these people supposed to get to work at a time when there is no transit? And last but not least, decades of dysfunctional VTA planning are the root cause of the massive construction in Santa Clara County, and nothing will ever change until we pass legislation to completely restructure VTA. Thank you.
Chris?
Hello, Chris Gian Greco with the Winchester Orchard Neighborhood Association. I'm the traffic and transportation liaison for our, uh, D1 Neighborhood Association. I've got serious concerns about all of this moving forward. The spin-off ramification of this will be drastic, drastic parking impacts to neighborhood streets and, you know, city streets, boulevards and every other place that would be a public parking place will be dramatically hit with, with these changes, right? How is the city going to modify its wholly inadequate parking compliance program to handle this influx of new street parking that surely will come and possibly devastate neighborhoods, impacting walkability and other life qualities issues in the neighborhoods? Thank you.
Aaron Eckhaus?
Hello, thank you. My name is Aaron Eckhaus, I'm the Regional Policy Manager for California YIMBY, uh, yes, in my backyard. Uh, here in support of eliminating minimum parking requirements in San Jose and the TDM policy. I think minimum parking requirements are one of the worst things we've done to our city. And removing them will help make San Jose a more affordable place, a safer place, and a more sustainable place. You've heard from staff how parking drives up rents by 17%? And that same study found that 70% of renter households nationwide are being forced to pay rent on a parking space that they don't need. That's money being taken out of the pockets of thousands of San Jose households, whether they can't spend at local businesses or invest in meeting the true needs of their families. Furthermore, when you build a city full of parking, you get a city full of cars. Uh, that means more congestion, more air pollution, uh, more traffic violence and more carbon pollution. So I encourage you to remove this harmful policy.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you. I would like to agree with the words of Tessa, uh, the time is now to, to work on some things. We can have a future of, uh, you know, we have to start thinking about fossil fuel economy as kind of a specialized process and it doesn't have to be the major driver of our economy at this time. Renewables are really important, uh, let's build that and, uh, and, and build towards safety, safety. With 37 seconds, uh, they are building, uh, down in Gilroy, a new transit center. They're planning 3,000 new parking spaces for it and they want to plan for more. That's single occupancy vehicle things. Um, they put this issue off because we need to debate the future of mass transit. Can you learn to talk to us about how mass transit can be safe for us in the future? Uh, in this COVID era and say past 2030? We can do it, thank you for offering these things. Make it an open constructive process to logically explain things to us. Thank you.
Adina Levin?
Good morning, Adina Levin, uh, with Friends of Caltrain and Seamos Bay Area. Wanted to speak in support of the staff direction and, um, many of the speakers who, uh, support these directions because of the benefits for housing affordability and for climate. Um, also, uh, wanted to, uh, highlight the transit needs that were elevated in this conversation. Um, there, uh, San Jose City Council members, uh, represent a good number of the seats on the VTA board and it's going to be essential for the city of San Jose to be supporting, um, through VTA and through the region to have frequent and fast, um, public transit service to be able to make this policy work. And lastly, keep an eye out for go-anywhere transit passes that are likely to be coming down through a regional transit fare study, which could really help provide people with more mobility that would support this policy. Thank you.
Amanda Bancroft?
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Amanda Bancroft and I'm from 350 Silicon Valley and leading their San Jose chapter. And we really want to show our support for this TDM update as it will help promote the bike, pedestrian and transit-friendly San Jose we envisioned. Considering especially that transportation is our largest greenhouse gas contributor here in San Jose, I request you to please adopt this much-needed update. Thank you.
Alex Schur?
Alex with Catalyze SV. Thanks, Council, for the good questions today. I want to address something a couple of you brought up regarding affordable housing and parking needs. In September 2016, the White House released a housing development toolkit and on page 16 it says, "Parking requirements generally impose an undue burden on housing development, particularly for transit-oriented or affordable housing." These requirements have a disproportionate impact on housing for low-income households because these families tend to own fewer vehicles but are nonetheless burdened by the extra cost of parking's inclusion in the development. We hope you will support the policy changes that city staff has worked on and we stand ready to chat with you about them. Come join us on September 8th for our event.
Final speaker, Victoria Pardida?
Hi, good morning, everyone, my name's Victoria Pardida, I live in District 7. Um, I think that there needs to be more thought when you think, um, about someone that has two to three jobs. Um, it's very hard to use public transit in that situation. If you do proper community engagement, you will know that people are very dissatisfied, um, with the current system because of time, cleanliness, et cetera. Um, I think you're thinking that just because transit is available near them, that doesn't mean that they're going to use it. I think it's unrealistic to think that someone's just going to use public transit or riding a bike. Um, so I suggest that you look more into that and finding ways of actually encouraging people to use public transit. Check your assumptions first, I think, um, thinking that one-size-fits-all approach is not a good thing to use in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Thanks, Tony, and thanks to all the members of the community for, uh, offering their insights. I want to say one more thing about this panel that, that just offered their insights to us over the last hour or so, uh, which is, uh, it's not uncommon that we will have the preachers then bring the choir and we will hear essentially the same message we heard from staff. That is not the case here. Uh, I really appreciate that all of you offer very diverse perspectives and they're very real perspectives. Uh, I know I live east of downtown, between East Side and downtown, and I'm aware, uh, the fact that uh, in some of our most struggling neighborhoods, that is where, uh, the parking challenges are enormous because we have a lot of families living... enormous, because we have a lot of families living under one roof, and everybody needs a car to get to work, and it's brutal. And so we have to offer solutions that help everyone. I appreciate many of the perspectives that have been offered here. Okay, let's go to questions, since we only have about 16 minutes left. There'll have to be brief questions for our panel or for staff from the council, and I don't see any hands from those present here in the chambers, so I will go on Zoom, and I see Councilmember Carrasco.
Good morning, and thank you for the presentation and all of the panelists who are with us today. I really appreciate this really extensive, in-depth look at a policy that we're thinking of changing. I guess the question very simply put is, what are the next steps in terms of engaging, especially in those communities of concern? I recognize the need to really address obstacles and issues that impact us in terms of building more and faster, but I'm very concerned about how this will, in my opinion, you know, it's a double-edged sword. We're impacted by a lack of housing, and housing, I think, is of paramount concern and should be a priority for any city at this point. But I really am concerned for that single mom. I'm a single mom, I have three children, all three of them now go to three different schools. I'd love to be able to take public transportation or put them on the back of my bike, but it's just the realities of it are difficult to wrap my head around it. So I like to know how we're going to engage, how we're going to offer solutions if we truly move in this direction, how we're going to ease the magnitude of burden on single moms who have multiple children having to travel to multiple places. So that's the biggest concern I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. If anyone would like to respond, certainly you're welcome to. If not, we...
Sure, I'll try to respond really quick, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. Basically, where staff is right now is we are trying to transform this policy into a legal ordinance. So that's a process that's going to take probably another month or so. Once that's kind of ready, we're going to, you know, continue to do the outreach we've been doing through online engagement with some of our neighborhood associations, but eventually the goal is that this would go to a few other committees, such as the Planning Commission, the Airport Land Use Commission, before coming to city council, ideally in early next year. And I think Ramses wants to say a couple things as well to respond to your comments.
Thank you, and great question, Councilmember Carrasco. You know, I think it's important to point out, look, this move only makes sense in the larger set of actions we've been talking about. We are, we have just invested an immense amount publicly into BART, into Caltrain, and we're continuing to invest in VTA, and we're looking at growth in transit in the Airport Connector and Stevens Creek Line work we're trying to do. We have a lot of work to do to create the entire system that helps the single mother who needs to get around quicker, right? So this, along with many other things that are going on, are what we need to kind of contextualize this within. Also, the policy isn't going to happen, its effects aren't going to be immediate, it's going to be over time, right? This is going to be project after project. Now, a project gets entitled, takes another five years before it gets built, right? And so you have to kind of think about the timeframe in which this actually has effect, as well as the timeframe in which we're talking about these transportation improvements that we're developing.
Other questions or comments from...
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember, please.
I really appreciate the feedback right now, and I recognize that this will not be an overnight solution, nor will it take effect immediately, as the last panelist just explained. You know, it's each project, and they take a while from entitlement to shovels in the ground. So I get that. I do hope, though, that as we're engaging the community, that we do it a little differently, that we get creative in that engagement, especially in low-income communities, those communities of concern, which is definitely district-wide. We're up against one end of the city trying to get our kids to multiple schools. I wish school buses were back in effect, by the way. That's going to be my plug. But I think it would be a really creative effort to walk in the shoes of any one of these families and just see where they trek. You know, if you were to kind of map out what I have to do for three children, it would be nearly impossible unless I got up at 4:30 in the morning to try and get the kids to school by 7:30. It truly can be very, very challenging. And I'm not saying that this impedes us from moving forward, but I do think that having a real-life-in-her-shoes perspective allows for those creative juices to keep flowing and for us to find ways of mitigating some of the issues that I anticipate coming up. And then Elma from Aruba mentioned that 69% own two or more cars, I think she said three. And I do think that this would have a huge impact on one of the poorest communities in the city of San Jose. I'd like to be able to truly dig deeper into that and find out how we can alleviate that and make sure that these vehicles aren't going to go into those residential streets. That's it. Again, more creativity in how we engage with the community, walking a day in her shoes, and then really talking to those communities that are going to be really impacted by this.
Thank you. I'll just take a brief moment to respond to your question, Councilmember Carrasco. Thank you so much. One of the models in this engagement that I just wanted to highlight was focus groups that came into neighborhood associations or organized groups such as Aruba. We're still on the docket to do one of our focus groups with them. But just to kind of open up the conversation, and as you're pointing out, live a day in their shoes, not make any assumptions, kind of what are the pressure points that you're facing? What are your lived experiences? How do you get around? What are your mobility needs? Rather than kind of imposing, you know, how do you like this? So I think it's really important that we continue to do that dialogue, and certainly hear the points that have been raised here today, and, you know, intend, I think, continue to do focus group conversations that are a little bit more open-ended than what you might typically see in an outreach process.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrasco, thank you for your comments. I think you just put your hand down, so I'm going to assume...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mayhann, I think you'll have the last word.
No pressure. Okay, I'll be really brief. I mean, first, I also just want to thank our excellent panel especially. It was really great to hear that diversity of thought on the panel. We don't always get that, and just appreciate, really appreciate staff for putting on an excellent presentation and overall discussion this morning, so just thank you all for that. I think, you know, I feel like seeing the data in the case that you've laid out, I really do feel like, directionally here, this is correct, and there are a lot of really good arguments. There are clearly inefficiencies in hitting costs in the status quo today. I mean, I think that's undeniable, and so you've given us a potential path forward here that certainly resonates with me. At the same time, I just want to reemphasize, I think, what you're hearing from many, I think many of my colleagues, or at least I'm hearing, and from some of our panelists, is just the incredible geographic and social and economic diversity, the diverse lived experience in our community. And it's, you know, it's a beautiful thing, and, you know, it's interesting, I was reflecting, I lived 15 years studying and working without owning a car, in Boston, Washington DC, and San Francisco. But throughout all those years, I was young, mostly single, did not have kids, you know, was living in really transit-rich, I mean incredibly, truly transit-rich areas. And it worked great, and so I've seen the other side of it. 15 years without owning a car, and I had a great quality of life. So I've seen how it can exist, but I think every city and every community is unique, and I just want to really emphasize that we have to get out into the neighborhoods across the entire city and really understand what is that lived experience going to be, and what do people need to go through? Because we're not just talking about how many parking spaces we're going to have, right? I mean, this is about an overall shift in people's life, like what happens when they walk out their front door every day. And so I just want to reemphasize, I think it's an obvious point we've all been making, but I just get nervous when it sounds like policy prescriptions make a lot of sense from a bird's-eye view of kind of directionally, where do we want to be in 20 years, but maybe don't spend as much time thinking about the true diversity of our city and just how different some of our neighborhoods are. So I guess I just leave you with that as something to chew on, and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I believe, unless anyone has any last burning thoughts, yes, well, thank you, Amanda, welcome. You can close us out.
Just want to respond to that, because we've heard this one-size-doesn't-fit-all a few times.
Yeah.
I just want to offer a perspective that the current minimum parking requirements is, in fact, one-size-fits-all. That does not respect the diversity of the neighborhoods, that is literally in the code. You want to build commercial, this many parking spaces. What eliminating parking requirements does is actually allow you to do exactly what you were talking about, Councilmember Mayhann, is consider the diversity of perspectives. A developer could say, "Near transit, I can provide a little bit less parking, because people are going to take transit. If I'm not near transit, I can provide a little more parking." Again, there's no maximums here. So just wanted to reflect specifically on that, that I actually think you're quite right about the diversity of places, and that that's what this change is allowing you to do. Thank you.
Great point to add, and done. Thank you all. The meeting's adjourned. Have a great weekend.